And I'm just admitting everybody now, so give it a minute and then we can start.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we got everyone on, so we will get started. The meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a virtual planning and zoning meeting hosted by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the Zoom meeting, you'll be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware of your camera if you have one, and your microphone may be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time, so you can be seen by others when, if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the state meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host may keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you're muted and or your camera's not on. There will be opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda have been available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.gilfordct.gov, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Four, comments of town agencies will be discussed as applicable to the application. There will be clarifying questions for the commissioners and the town planner will direct our attention to any additional items pertinent to the application. After all, five, after all commissioners' questions are exhausted, those who wish to speak in support or in opposition to the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address to the record and make a statement. Six, the applicant will then have an opportunity just to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Seven, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of the question and has a right to appeal to the superior court if desired. Eight, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the planning and zoning department at 203-453-8039, or by emailing planning.zoning@gilfordct.gov after 9:00 AM. Nine, all actions taken on applications tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves to the record before speaking. Seated this evening are the following members, who will please identify themselves. Bill Freeman.
Here.
Ted Sands.
You're muted, you're muted Ted.
Ted's muted, he's there. Sean Cosgrove. And I'm Scott Emmett, Chair. Alternates present is Larry Zolo, and Larry will be seated tonight. Staff present are Han Hartson, Town Planner. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available to the town website for viewing. I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Second from Bill, on favor, please say aye.
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 Do you? First item on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we have six text amendments that were tabled at the previous meeting. I would ask that we remove them from the table so we can discuss them.
All right, who would like to make a motion for that?
I make a motion to remove the six text amendments from the table.
Okay, second.
Second.
Thank you, Larry. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And please proceed.
Mr. Chair, the first item is a text amendment for design review. The applicant is myself on behalf of the town of Guilford. This is a text amendment to clarify the provisions for design review. As you'll recall, we discussed all of these text amendments previously in our other meetings. This is a text amendment where we have a situation where the current language contradicts itself, where anything, some uses in a residential zone require a special permit, which makes those uses subject to design review. But the use and activity is also indicated as not subject to design review. So in this case, we would like to change the language to explicitly exclude accessory structures in a residential zone from design review.
And just to clarify, does design review have any oversight at all over all zones?
Not in the current ordinance.
And what, are you familiar with how many zones they are permitted? Is it only in the historical district?
No, they actually have quite a bit of purview. Design review is reviewing all signs, they're reviewing all site plan and special permit applications, except in this case, we're trying to remove residential uses from that. So it's mostly business zones, but there are a few instances of crossover.
And can planning and zoning overrule design review?
Design review has no statutory authority, they're advisory only. So even if an applicant goes through design review, they don't actually have to comply with what design review asks them to do.
Thank you, they're all, they're advisory only.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners on this one? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak related to this item? I'll say it a bunch of times tonight, so I'll just say it for the first time. If your camera's not on, then I can't see you wave, so you'll have to raise your hand through the Zoom platform or turn on your camera, otherwise. We'll move on to whether a commissioner wants to make a motion to approve this text amendment.
So moved.
Second.
We had Sean, we have a second from Ted. Discussion seems to clear things up, that was a problem. We'll go, we have a motion in a second. We'll vote on approval, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
And then vote yes. All right, next item.
Excellent, I'm not sure we closed the public hearing on that one.
Sure. We can do that too.
I think we want to make sure on each one of these that we open and close the public hearing.
All right, that's fine. A motion to close the public hearing on the design review prior to our previous vote.
So moved.
Thanks, Bill.
Second.
Ted, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
And then vote yes. Right?
Excellent. Our next item on the agenda is a text amendment for exterior lighting. Again, I am the applicant on behalf of the town of Guilford, and this is a text amendment to clarify the provisions for exterior lighting. Like the previous text amendments, we have some uses, again, oversized structures in a residential zone, subject to a special permit, which makes it subject to the lighting regulations, but then there's another line below that in the box in 7.5 that says the use and activity is not subject to 7.5. So again, like the previous one, we would like to change the language to explicitly exclude accessory structures in a residential zone from exterior lighting regulations.
And, you know, just, just a question, where, where would this? Under what circumstances would this come up?
When I have a special permit, you have, you see a lot of special permits now for accessory structures over 750 square feet. So in that case, somebody's building a big garage, they are required to come to you for a special permit in a residential zone. The, in that case, the current language requires them both to go through design review and also allows them to be excluded from design review. So that's why we're trying to clean up that language. But that's the most, that's the most common special permit in a residential zone that you're seeing.
But it is in no way restricting the, the rights of the property owner.
No, we're just clearing up a contradiction in the language.
Okay.
You could, you could clear it up the other way too, and you could say that all accessory structures over 700 square, 50 D square feet are subject to the exterior lighting ordinance, but I don't think that was the original intent, so that's why we decided to go this way.
But wouldn't we want to maintain dark sky principles? In which case, we would ask the builder to make sure their exterior lighting was dark sky compliant.
Yes, we do have a separate lighting ordinance that suggests strongly dark sky compliance. It is a very good question. I can't remember off the top of my head.
So Larry, Larry's question is, I mean, really a legal one, requires or? I mean, it, it really? Do we require dark sky permits?
There's law, there's, the language is not well crafted in the lighting ordinance, I will say that. It's strongly recommended is, is the language. So it's not an actual requirement, and that is a section I intend to look at in the future. But there is some ambiguity in the current language. We generally don't see, at least, you know, in the past six months, we have not seen lighting associated with these special permits in these larger garages. But yes, that is always something that could come up.
And so, so basically, we can, we can tweak this later, but to move on, we'll just move on, we'll just move on.
Yeah, I agree, I think we should look at the lighting ordinance. But I think, in this case, we're trying to clarify a direct contradiction within the language of the ordinance itself.
Just clear it up and, and move on.
Well, and also, it's, it's a special permit in that case, so we can still ask them what their plan is for lighting.
Right.
As part of the special permit application.
Right, right.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Don't put up to the public any questions or comments, I've not questioned any comments from the public.
I believe we have to open. Sorry, I'm tired already.
We're in the public meeting now, so why do you have to open the public hearing?
Well, we closed the last one, so we never opened, I mean, you could make it a motion that you're staying open until you close them, generally, yeah.
Yeah, well, isn't that the point? And isn't that the point of opening the public hearing is means we're opening the public hearing on all public hearing items?
Well, you didn't explicitly state that, but.
Okay, well, that's, that's what, hitherto, that is what should be inferred whenever I ask for someone to vote to open the public hearing at the beginning of the meeting.
That was awesome, that was beautiful.
And that decreed.
And I recommend that once we open the public meeting, we don't vote on any of these amendments until we go to the regular meeting.
All right, yeah, that's a, we, that's a difference of opinion that I, you know, people have different opinions on that one.
So we're saying that all of them are going to remain open until we close them individually, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Sure. Okay. All right, do you have any public comment on this item? Seeing any hands raised? So here, motion to close the public item, public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Second from Sean, we have motion in a second, discussion. All right, we'll move to votes, motion to close, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
All right, I have a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
So moved.
You can hear Bill first, second.
Second.
I'm Sean. Discussion. We have a motion in a second to approve, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Oh, also, good. All right, next item, man.
Mr. Chair, the next item is a text amendment for landscaping and screening. The applicant is myself on behalf of the town of Guilford, a text amendment to clarify the provisions for landscaping and screening. Similar to the previous two text amendments, the current language contradicts itself in that some accessory structures in a residential zone require special permit, which also requires these items go conform with landscaping and screening regulations. This is in contrast with the existing language in the next line, which states a single family dwelling and any accessory structure thereto is not subject to landscaping and screening standards. The text change eliminates the contradiction.
Great. Yeah, I mean, for all of these, it's basically, you're coming for a special, you're coming for a special permit and you are required to meet those requirements of a special permit, right, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
This is straightforward.
Right? Any questions or comments from commissioners? Open up to the public, any comments from the public on this item? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Thanks, Ted. Second from Sean. We have a motion in a second to close, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
So yes, entertain a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Next, Ted, second from Bill. Any discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
So yes, next item, man.
Next item is text amendment, financial guarantee provisions. The applicant is myself on behalf of the town of Guilford, text amendment to clarify the provisions for financial guarantees and to align the provisions with the state statutes. The state statutes have been amended to modify parameters when a financial guarantee may be required and for what reasons. The text change captures these changes and aligns the regulations with the state statutes. So this text change, unlike the other ones, you'll find in the package, go on for 12 pages. We vetted this thoroughly to make sure that we are completely aligned with the state statutes and we spell the word guarantee consistently throughout the document.
So, and, and does this refer to bonding?
Yes.
Okay.
So you can bond for, and I'm not going to get every single one of these correct. You can bond for soil erosion sedimentation role, you can bond post occupancy for work that has not yet been completed, like what we asked Frank for, for Dunkin' Donuts, and I'm missing one. Excuse me?
Betonsnole is, you know, one of the.
Yeah, well, that was a, that was a bond posted for completion of work, and we're pulling that bond, yes.
Also, like roadwork when you're doing a new subdivision gets.
There you go, yep.
Right, right, right.
All right. Any other questions or comments or questions? Open up to the public, any comments from the public on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close, public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Sean.
Second.
Second from Larry. I. We have a motion in a second, motion to close, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands is currently away. Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
I'm sure, we missed our moment for public response on that item, Marjorie.
I vote yes.
Thanks, Ted. We have an entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Right, man.
The next text amendment is for the chairman's signature, the applicant is myself on behalf of the town of Guilford. This is a text amendment to streamline the administrative post admin, post approval tasks. There is language in the current regulations that require the chair to come into the office and sign the actual documents that are approved. Given everybody's schedules, it's just easier if we amend the, the regulations so that the zoning enforcement officer can essentially play that role. And you see the text that's amended, we just substituted that language into the text.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the CEO is more qualified than the chair to do that as well, so.
We discussed this, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think that when we, we went into this long, long, long-term process of, you know, amending the regulations, we wanted to make it easier for applicants, so I think this is very appropriate.
Right, any other comments from commissioners? I'll open it up to the public, any comments on this item? Marjorie? Shansky? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Marjorie Shansky, New Haven. I'm delighted that the commission is entertaining these corrections or amendments to the regulations, and I apologize, I haven't seen the actual text of them, but I haven't heard any mention in the course of the ones that have been approved thus far of an effective date, which the statute requires be established by the commission, so I just wanted to encourage that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
The draft approval notices that were posted online do include an effective date of June 24th, and the notice of decision will be published on June 20th on each one of these items.
Thank you.
And the reports are online if anybody wants to look at them.
All right. Any other comments from the public on this item? All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Sean.
Second.
Second from Bill. All right, we have a motion in a second to close, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Second from Larry. Any? Discussion, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve, Larry is a.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
And also, it's, all right, last one.
Yep, Mr. Chair, if I may, as we go forward, it would be helpful if we say when we make a motion to approve, we're making an motion to approve in alignment with the approval letter as noted, as distributed and posted online. Because those all have conditions attached to them.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is a text amendment for short-term rentals and vacation stays, the applicant is myself on behalf of the town of Guilford, a text amendment to remove the prohibition on short-term rentals and vacation stays as related to accessory dwelling units. As discussed previously, I think this was an unintentional error in the ordinance that was passed in October. There is a definition in the definition section 2.2 for short-term rentals, but then the only mention of it is in the ADU provision under section 3.9A1 little e, where the language said neither the principal dwelling unit nor the accessory dwelling unit may be rented or used for short-term rentals or vacation stays. That's the only mention in the entire document about short-term rentals. And when we discussed this previously with the commission, we all agreed that it was not the intent of the commission to regulate either short-term rentals or vacation stays, and so we are eliminating that language from the ordinance.
Thank you, questions or comments from commissioners?
So, just, just one, and.
Yep.
What implications, if any, does this have? Is it?
I get calls all the time of people saying, do, does the town of Guilford regulate short-term rentals or vacation stays, and up until this point, I've had to say, if it's in an ADU, it's not allowed. But do we have the enforcement staff to actually enforce that? Absolutely not. And a quick check of, I, I think I did VRBO a couple of months ago, there are about 800 different short-term rentals in the area that are happening as we speak, so.
In the area or in Guilford?
In the area, I think I, I did like, I was looking at all the neighboring towns, I think Guilford was somewhere around the 400 mark when I checked, but when I was looking at what others folks were doing as well. Realistically, we, even if we wanted to regulate it, we don't have the staff to do so. That's just a practical matter, if you wanted to regulate it, we obviously could. But then somebody would have to keep track of all of that.
And, and so, you know, the, 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 the the way I think about this is, you know, if, if there are complaints from neighbors, that is the first kind of marker for me as to whether we tighten this up or whether we just, you know, do what you're suggesting is to make it more reasonable.
Yeah, also, though, it, it, if it does become something where there's lots of complaints, one is if it's noise complaints, then there's a noise ordinance in town that they should follow. And then, also, again, there's an ordinance system for the town. And, and perhaps that would be another avenue that the town could pursue if, if the town wanted to regulate this further.
I would.
I'm not sure if.
I'm sorry. Since September, I haven't had a single complaint about this.
Well, that, that, that is a marker for me, and that, that, you know, I mean, these properties are private properties, and, you know, if they want to make some extra income. Properties are private properties and, you know, if they want to make some extra income. Um. All for it because it allows them to stay in their property, and I think that's a good thing.
Thanks, um, alright, we'll open it up, uh, yeah, Bill.
I thought the whole point of the ADUs was for rentals.
Potentially, but, you know, usually the thought was.
Usually it's in laws.
Yeah, I mean, the thought was more of a long-term rental, but, uh, again, we're not really, you can't really. And certainly the ADU, the state ADU rulings don't specify anything related to that, so. And we're trying to align with the state law as much as possible. Uh, okay, I'll open it up to public, uh, comments, anyone? Uh, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand through the Zoom platform, yeah, we got one from Aaron, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, hi folks, um, I'm just trying to get my camera off, but it looks like for some reason. I can't, um, yeah, my name is Erin Alvey, I'm three two nine three mile course in Guilford. Um, I'd like to read a short, um, comment that I have about, uh. STR or auxiliary dwelling units, which I'll call ADUs. And STRs, which I'll use as a catch-all phrase for vacation stays and short-term rentals. Um, is that allowed?
Yes.
Thank you. Dear Commissioners, Town Planners, and fellow community members, I'm a full-time resident of Guilford, Connecticut, and an active registered voter. My partner's family has lived in Guilford for four plus generations. I passionately oppose the proposed text amendments to the town of Guilford's planning and zoning statutes. That would remove prohibitions on short-term rentals and vacation stays, STRs. As related to accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Conversely, I fully support continuing to restrict ADUs from being used for STR purposes. My reasoning is driven by two categories. One, the negative impacts of STRs on community well-being and the extreme costly challenge of reigning in the industry once permitted. And two, the affordable housing crisis. Allowing ADUs to be used as STRs directly threatens Guilford's ability to be a thriving community. Guilford is already experiencing an affordable housing crisis, as is a shared reality across the state. It is my impression that Guilford recently start, started permitting ADUs. When the town realized these dwellings may be part of the solution to alleviate severely constrained housing supply. By nature of their smaller size and, and inherent location on a shared property. ADUs would have a high likelihood of being less expensive than a full-sized domicile. Thus, ADUs are seen as suitable housing options for elderly, newly arrived, or mid to lower income demographics. After all, diversity is the spice of life. Meanwhile, STRs often fetch, uh, sorry, meanwhile, uh, by allowing STRs for ADUs. The town of Guilford would be putting vulnerable populations against the capitalistic trends and deep pockets that got us into the affordable housing crisis to begin with. By continuing to prohibit STRs, Guilford is. Adhering to a legally mandated affordable housing plan that was submitted to the state of Connecticut. Committing to increasing affordable housing stock to a minimum percentage. Desirable towns and cities across the USA are experiencing over tourism. While I will not share whether or not I believe Guilford is al- already experiencing that. Allowing further STRs to operate in ADUs may open the floodgates and community quality of life could plummet. Currently, ADUs are not allowed to be used as STRs. Thus, any existing homeowners with an ADU have voluntarily constructed said ADU. Without the financial responsibility or accounting mathematics of generating income from STRs. So they cannot argue that the town of Guilford is causing insurmountable financial burden to private landowners by upholding the STR prohibition. There's a lot of big money behind STRs such as the real estate lobby. If Guilford residents get fed up with tourism, when the town tries to do anything to rein in STRs. There will be costly ongoing legal battles. If you search the internet, quote Airbnb court battles, a litany of results appear. Thus far, it has been virtually impossible to ban STRs once permitted in towns across the United States. Thus, Guilford's renowned quality of life will be irreparably harmed, and the affordable housing crisis will be both prolonged and exacerbated. I implore you to uphold the prohibition on using S- ADUs as STRs and vacation stays. And reject the proposed text amendment, we need to retain what little regulation of STRs we are able to yet. We need to allocate funding to have the staff and administration to be able to regulate them, and this funding will pay back dividends in terms of quality of life. Thanks.
Thank you. Um. Yes, Bill.
So, um, and as, as this person is differentiating between, uh. Airbnb and VRBO type situations with ADUs versus just plain rental, I, I. Is there any way to? Separate those effectively, I, I'm just asking.
Uh, yeah, I mean. The only language in the ordinance now. Um, relates to ADUs themselves, so it is absolutely silent on. Short-term rentals of anything else. Um, and being silent, it's allowed. Um, so I guess you folks have to decide if, I mean, when we previously discussed it and I asked the question. I heard from the commission that there was no intent to regulate. Short-term rentals or vacation stays, but if you would like to revisit that, then we can revisit this text as well. But the text as it exists only applies to ADUs.
Yes, and are, are you aware of? Um, an issue similar to what we're discussing now occurring in other towns along the shoreline?
Uh, I have not done a lot of research, all I know is, um, my experience in New Haven is that. There was a lot of discussion about whether short-term rentals should be regulated. And I don't know what may have happened in the last year or so, but it immediately becomes an issue of. If you're going to reg- regulate short-term rentals, how are you going to do it practically? Um, what are, what are the registration requirements? Who's going to inspect? Um, the short-term rentals, um, there are building department issues as well. Um, you know, around safety, I can tell you, um, I do know from where my father lives in. On Long Island, um, there's a requirement there that you. On the books, the requirement is you can only rent at two weeks at a time. But I can tell you that nobody's actually following those regulations, and that's. He lives in a very wealthy town that could possibly stop the situation, I think. Most municipalities are struggling with this question. Um. But I will just, I will tell you as well that. Most people who come into this office who are considering ADUs are super excited about it, and in most cases, it's. To generate income so that they can stay in their own home and supplement that income. Um, nobody's really, of the folks who've come in for the ADUs, nobody's really. Talked to me about whether it's a short-term rental or whether it's all, I'm assuming those are all long-term rentals, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, um, before we let, um, Erin comment again. Uh, let me comment because then she could address, uh, my issue at the same time, I'm not sure. How this applies to the, uh, affordable housing crisis. If someone's building an ADU for the purpose of short-term rentals, uh, and, um. They can't do that, they just won't build their ADU. Um, if they're building, uh, with the idea of long-term rentals, because that's going to be a steady income. Uh, then in fact, we're helping the, uh, affordable housing crisis, so it's not clear to me how this rule, um. Uh, pertains to that, and I welcome Erin to, uh, uh, explain her reasoning there.
Alright, one more quick comment, Erin?
Sure, yeah, thank you, I appreciate, um, this dialogue and the opportunity to, to offer a few supplemental. Um, responses, uh, one is that. Just because Guilford doesn't currently have a system for monitoring and regulating or. The administrative side of regulating STRs in the first place doesn't mean that such a system. Doesn't exist anywhere in the US or abroad, um. You know, there's, there's other towns that s- across the US that still allow, um, short-term rentals. And have different systems in place to attempt to monitor them. Um, the attempt part is that there's still a lot of lobbying, um, against any form of. Of regulation, although they have, you know, been able to cover their costs in terms of, you know, the fines. Um, for, for bad actors, um, to keep the program going, I'm happy to, to put commissioners in touch with, um. Commissioners from the city of South Lake Tahoe in California, I know that they have been very creative in trying to figure out. How to deal with over tourism and, uh, you know, regulate. These industries, um. Also, in regards to the intention of folks building ADUs, um, on whether they're going to be. STRs or, or long-term rentals, um. They're. Having ADUs allowed as STRs. Would, could potentially be more favorable to a land, a homeowner than. As long-term rentals, because you could potentially make the same amount of revenue with less, um, effort. So it just feels like. That the use of ADUs as STRs would outcompete the ability for. Lower-income elderly folks to, to find a place to live, you know, while still providing revenue for, for the homeowner. To essentially stay in their home, like, um, Ann had mentioned is, you know, one use that she's hearing of that. I think also, you know, just because we're hearing certain uses or certain interests now at the very beginning of allowing. Sure, a lot, short-term rentals, uh, elsewhere, um, and, and ADUs in general, um. You know, does, we can't predict. That, we can't say with certainty that it will remain tho- those same, same uses or conditions, you know, once. Word gets out and, and more interest gains that, you know, there could be just more and more ADUs that are being built, more and more. Short-term rentals that are, you know, coming into ADUs more and more noise, more and more, you know, traffic, that kind of thing. So it still feels like the quality of life could decline.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
I'm so, sorry about my background, but I'm with, hey. Um, so, one thing I'll mention, Erin, that you can check in, uh, the Guilford has an Affordable Housing Committee, I forgot the long official name for it. But it is being turned into a commission to work on, that has been and continues to work on affordable housing, so I would definitely encourage you to, uh. Check in on, uh, what those folks are working on, um, and provide thoughts there because. They're going to be doing some adjustments to the amendments, um, to the regulations related to affordable housing to try to incentivize. Um, and, you know, hone in on what the correct regulations are for our town, so. Um, I think regardless of how this bill goes, I would say check in with them, um, and provide some thoughts. Um, alright, any other comments from the public? Seeing none. Open up, sorry, I'll open up for, uh, let's see here, do we have a motion to close the public hearing item on, on this item?
Don't move.
Thanks, Bill, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, we have a motion and a second to close, Larry, Larry Zola?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
And, uh, yes, alright, do we have a motion to approve based on the, um, posted? Um, what's the word it uses, I should be using, Dan?
The text amendment as, as revised.
As revised for the posted. Um. Agenda for this meeting.
Oh, the, for the posted, um. Approval notice, I would call it.
Approval notice, okay, thank you.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill, do we have a second? Thank you, Sean, uh, discussion?
You know, I'm not. I, I. I guess I'm not quite comfortable with this yet, um. I. When I first ran into this idea of ADUs. Um, I always thought that this was, uh, either. A family member or. I've always thought of it as a long-term. Uh, rental situation. And I had never frankly considered that somebody wanted to go into the business of. Of being a, uh, uh, Airbnb. But, I mean, some people do that, it's a very time-consuming way to. Make a living, but it, you know, if you, especially if you only have one unit, uh. I don't know, I, I, I mean, I, I've never considered that we would allow that. And I'm still not convinced.
Right?
So, I'll, I'll just say, you know, you know, these are, you know, these are private property owners, and. As long as they're not infringing upon their neighbors. Privacy, um. Their well-being. And we don't get any complaints, which Anna stated that she has not received any. Just, you know, I mean, this is. This is what is happening across the country and, you know, and the other thing that other people have stated is that. If it allows people to stay where they are. By supplementing their income. I'm all for that, I, I think that stability in a community is a good thing.
Alright, Bill?
So I have an ADU, it's attached to my house, and. We did it, you know, we know some folks who have like rooms they do with Airbnb and stuff, but it is a tremendous amount of effort. And so we've always just rented it on an annual basis for now six years, and I know that there's. Across the street, have an, have an ADU that they rent year-round and people next door to then do, so I think the majority, as, as, uh. Ann has said is for. Annual rental, not short-term Airbnb, and as I think Ted mentioned, it, it is a tremendous amount of work to. You know, have people come and stay for a day or two or three or a week, so I don't think the majority of. ADUs are used for short-term rental.
Yeah, I would, I'd say that the discussion's a good one, and it's an important, it's an important one. Both for, you know, as discussed, affordability in the town as well as economics in the town. I'm just thinking that as far as affordability goes, we're, we're having a Affordable Housing Commission for that reason. That, to advocate for such things in the town, and then as far as economics go, I mean, that might fall on a different, uh, board as well. But that's kind of. Where I think I am in terms, like, if we're talking just purely land use, then, then, you know. Um, that makes me lean towards approval of this.
Uh, it makes me lean towards the two, Scott, and I, I, I just, you know, with all respect to Erin, I, I just don't see this. Applying to affordable housing. I just don't.
And just to echo Sean, uh. A- as you know, I, I've been interested in the affordable housing problem and thought a, a lot about it, and, uh. Uh, I'm not, uh, convinced by Erin's argument, and I think, uh, I'm more swayed by what Bill has said and what Sean has said.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion in a second to approve this text amendment, uh, per the, uh, approval notice.
Removed.
Uh, so, well, yeah, we already have those. We just did the discussion, Larry Zola.
Yes.
Uh, Ted Sands?
No.
Uh, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
And I also, yes, motion carries one. Uh, alright, next item is seventeen Benton's note.
Mr. Chair, um, next item is seventeen Benton's Knoll map eight lot twenty-four seventeen. Zone R five and PRD, the applicant is Michael Martochi of Fool's Gate Pool and Spa. The owner is John Frankie, apologize if I said that wrong. The owner is John Frankie. Apologize if I said that wrong. This is the modification of a special permit to allow for new twelve-by-sixteen-foot in-ground pool and landscape. Um, this item was tabled at the last meeting, so we do need to vote to take it off the table.
I have a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
Thank you, Ted. Second from?
I'll second.
Nice there. Um, Larry Zola?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean's not here. Oh, yes. Uh, all right. Uh, who do we have here for Benton's Knoll? Uh, like I said, this is the second time we're hearing this one. So where are we in terms of an update?
Hi, everyone. Mike Martosi, Poolscapes, um, representing Seventeen Benton's Knoll. We um got tabled because uh we needed to provide a lighting plan. Um, we have the lighting plan now. We submitted it to Anne a couple of weeks back or um that, uh, Anne, are you able to bring that up to show the question?
I can do that, just a sec.
Thank you. And also while Anne is um bringing that up, um, John is here with us, um, and he can explain, I remember there was some some tensions between the association and some neighbors. I think John has resolved any of that um with the Benton's Knoll Association. I'll let him speak on that. He can speak on it, um.
Uh, sure.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so um, what we did have was an objection from a neighbor and also from the uh homeowners' association. Um, and I worked with both of those uh group, both the neighbor and the group. They should have provided um letters, uh, and then I saw there was a, a specific email from the neighbor to Anne today that they've um, they've withdrawn all objections to the redesigned plan here, which is, it, it's, it's way down in scale. Um, there's no privacy fence. It's, it's the standard fence that they use in the um in, in the uh, this, you know, the area. And they have no objection and that was, that's about it. Um, hopefully, Anne, you have that information where they removed their objection. They've given me approval. So um, I don't know if you have any other questions for me.
Um, Anne, I think we lost the uh site. Yeah.
Okay, let me try again.
Um, Mike, do you want to walk us through the changes from the last time we saw this?
I, I'm, I'm sorry. The last time we talked about two things. We talked about the lighting, which we're gonna deal with here, and we talked about approval by the homeowners' association. I haven't seen anything that says the homeowners' association has approved this.
I have a letter inserted into the file to that effect.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
Based off the changes that were made, Mike, can you walk us through the changes that were made? Please?
We downgraded or upgraded, whatever you want to call the fencing, was originally a privacy fence. Uh, we changed that to black aluminum ornamental. The fence was originally six foot, I believe. Now we're at four foot black aluminum, which is kind of the, kind of the norm everywhere. But um definitely the norm on the street for the existing five pools, four or five pools that are on Benton's Knoll. Um, we reduced the size of the pool by ten square feet. I don't really believe that was much of an issue, um, but it is uh a tad bit smaller. Um.
And I believe there was a pavilion that's no longer gonna be there, is that right?
Took out the uh pavilion.
Ergola, yeah.
Ergola, um, that is no longer gonna be there, which, you know, that's a structure that would have been seen from the road. Um. Uh, less square footage of pavers, for sure. Um, took out a step. And um.
Also included some more um, um plantings to to make it so that the, when you're seeing it from the road, you won't, you won't see anything except the plantings. You probably won't even see the fencing. So, um, the neighbor, I, as I said, I believe that the neighbor uh who had an issue, I talked with him and Anne, you should have gotten an email from him today where he said he had no issue. So um, I, I believe that every single objection had been, has been dealt with.
Okay, let's go over the lighting, Mike, please.
Sure. Um, it may be hard to see for you guys, um, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven little Xs on the screen. I'm looking on a laptop. Um, and those are solar. Uh, they're three watts. There's no wiring. They're decorative landscape solar lights.
With the little baller things that are like
Yeah.
Flutters off the ground.
I submitted a cut sheet. Anne, I don't know if you have it. I I mean, there, there you go. And thank you.
Yep.
Um, and these are just, you know, walkway lights. They're not up on the house or floodlights shining on the pool, nothing like that, no. You can see the stakes. You can even see the cost.
Thanks. Um, any question, any other questions or questions? Right, uh, I'll open it up for the public, any, yeah, Larry?
And I'll just, uh, just to revisit, uh, are these pavers uh permeable? Is there gap between the pavers? Is this a, a non-permeable surface? And how does that relate to what's allowed by the regulations?
Well, Anne can speak to Anne this.
Yeah.
Uh, meets regulations.
I can't tell you if these are permeable or not. Um, the Benton's Knoll as an overall site with a, a tremendous amount of acreage for development, has an overall stormwater management plan. Um, there's nothing in the original special permit that um addresses or requires changes to the stormwater management plan based on individual build-out of these. Um, I think they're gonna call them parcels because they're not technically parcels. They're part of the overall plan. Um, there was no grading provided in this submission.
Okay, thank you, Anne.
Right, any other questions from commissioners? Uh, Anne, if you want to stop sharing, we'll open it up to the public. Uh, raise your hand to the Zoom platform or wave at your camera. Uh, looks like we have no comments from the public. Um, seeing that is when the commissioner likes to make a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Thanks, Larry.
Second.
There's a second from Bill. Uh, all right, we have a motion and a second to Yep.
If I may, um, in, in the draft approval notice that was posted on the website, um, there are um two issues that I want everybody to be aware of.
Thanks.
And these came from Kevin McGee, who is, manages our natural resources division. Um, he noticed that, um, and I'll share my screen again so you can see this. On the southeast corner of the existing patio, and it's down here, if you can see my cursor. Um, there's a part, piece of the patio that um has uh crossed over the line into the existing conservation easement on the property. And he has requested that that little piece of patio be removed. And, and also that prior to this work starting, that the limits of the existing conservation easement be marked out by a licensed surveyor. And that no stockpiling, grading, filling, or deposition of material will be allowed in that area. These are additional uh conditions seven, eight, and nine in the report. Um, and the other condition is that any discharges from the pool be in alignment with the Connecticut deep general permit for discharge of swimming pool waters.
Uh, Mike, any, do you have any problem with the discharge or with the stockpiles comments?
Uh, there, there won't be any stockpiling. Um, we will haul all materials off, off-site as we're excavating. Um, we already wrote, reached out to Eric Davison. He's a licensed soil scientist. He's gonna flag the wetlands line for us before we begin. Um.
This is not the wetlands line. It's the conservation easement that's on the entire parcel. It's a different, it's a different line. If you look at this, at the original special permit for Benton's Knoll, there was a conservation easement placed on part, part of the land essentially as a trade-off for the development. So that line needs to be flagged. And the uh piece of the patio that um is over the line needs to be removed.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
That would be mostly done by a surveyor, not a, not a soil scientist.
Right. Well, there was, I did get an email a while back from Mr. McGee asking for the hundred-foot wetland buffer, buffer to be flagged before we started the project. Which I agree, that's, we hired Eric Davidson for that.
Okay. Um, all right. To John, John, the owner, any comment on that? Are you all right with that stipulation?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly fine. One, but if we want to take part of the patio away, if that's over the line, for sure. Um, the only thing I would say is that that was drawn by uh Torrison. I'm not sure it's a hundred percent accurate where that patio is. So if somebody stakes it out and it's over, then we'll, I can remove a, you know, honestly, I, I'm, you may see a something for me in the, in the future to, to remove a lot of the patio anyway and put in grass in that area. So um, I have no problem with removing the corner that anyway.
Okay, thank you very much. All the more reason to stake it out, Mike. Um, okay, so uh, Anne, if we're good, we'll move on to the motion second for closing. All right, uh, Larry Zola?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And I'll also vote yes. Um, anyone like to make a motion approved based off the approval notice that was posted?
So moved.
Bill?
Second.
Second from Ted, discussion. Um, the only thing I want to say is I'm, I'm glad that the neighbors were able to get together with the HOA and with the neighbor and
Yeah.
come to a resolution. Um, that's, that's what we want to see. So
Yep.
Uh, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Well, any, any other co- uh, any other discussion from commissioners? Seeing now we have approval, uh, motion and a second for approval. Larry Zola?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And I'll also vote yes. Thank you very much. All right, Anne?
Mr. Chair, the next item is eleven forty Route eighty, map one oh five, lot zero two nine dash zero five, zone R eight. The applicant owner is Karen Lane Tasto for Lanes LLC. This is a special permit for modification of a pre-existing non-conforming use per section eight point two point E. Um, I just want to note for the record, um, I can bring up that language, the language of that section if, if commissioners need it. But in general, what this section of the ordinance allows the commission to do is take a pre-existing non-conformity and um allow for a modification of the conformity as long as it's lessening the non-conformity. And in this case, uh, this address received a variance in the early seventies to allow for um auto body repair in a residential zone. And um I will circle back with more information after you speak with the applicants.
Right, who do we have representing the application? Please state your name and address for the record. Do you have anyone here?
Well, we do. They're on mute.
Oh, you might be muted. Sorry about that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you.
Um, we're just going from the auto body to a less invasive foundation company. We're gonna rent to them, and they will only be using the office and store equipment, um, mostly pickup trucks and vehicles, and then they obviously take their stuff off-site to, you know, wherever they're gonna be building a foundation, so they won't be working up there. Um, I think Anne has the letter from the Wedeman Brothers. And we also have Zach Wedeman and the Zoom meeting if you have any questions for them. So we're just trying to make it less invasive and just rent it out for now.
Okay, um, Anne, I think you, you had some conversations earlier and we can see if, if some of through those discussions, some of those things have changed, but Anne, you want to walk me through what your original conversations were on this lot?
Okay. So um, again, with a pre-existing non-conformity, um, your guidance from me is that you're looking for a use that is less intensive, less non-conforming than the current use. Um, per the letter that was submitted from the applicant, um, there appears to be an intent to store lumber and wood panel forms on-site and some storage of commercial vehicles. You'll see that I uh wrote two different reports for this site, depending on how you guys interpret the language of less non-conforming. Um, one for approval and one for denial. The residential zones as they exist now do only allow for uh one commercial vehicle to be stored on-site. Um, so more than that would be an, an additional non-conformity. Um, and the residential zones currently do not allow for outdoor storage of materials as well. So those are the two issues that you really need to take a look at and decide whether the proposed use is more conforming or less non-conforming than the existing use.
All right, and the, the previous use was an auto body, so
Yes.
presumably there was cars everywhere?
Everywhere, yeah.
Okay.
That's the only, that you, that and the dry cleaner, according to the state, is the most invasive. We have to do phase one, phase two, you know, and so, and so this would be less invasive by far.
Could we uh hear a little more detail then on, on the plan for specifically exterior score, exterior storage and also how many vehicles we're talking about?
Yeah, Zach, are you on there? Cause he
Yep, I'm here. Um, so, most of the vehicles are on job sites during the day, and it's, most of our employees bring them home um with them. So as far as like full-time commercial vehicles being parked there, it'd be, I'd say, one to two. Um, similar with the commercial, uh, the rack truck is usually parked on job sites and not back at the shop. Um, and then as far as the, the wood um forms would go and panels, um typically those are also on job sites and would just be coming back to, to the shop in between going out to another job. Um, and that stuff would always be, all, all be kept in the back and not seen from the, from Route eighty.
And mostly you'll be using the office, right?
Yeah, it's basically gonna be, it's a shop space um for some of our other material that has to be stored inside. And then al- also like an estimating office with um, with me and one other part-time uh administrative assistant.
Right, any other questions from commissioners?
Um, i- is this, um, I'm trying to orient myself to eleven forty Route.
I can share. I can share.
It used to be the
It used to be lanes.
Okay.
Which was very good.
So ju- just, just, just west of seventy-seven.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, seventy-seven's right here. So this is seventy-seven.
Yep.
I mean, this is the location here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there uh any signage uh involved with this proposed uh use?
Uh, we had a sign up. I don't know if they'd be able to, you know, switch the name, you know, it was already there.
We, we took that sign down and at the moment, we don't have any um plans to put a big sign up. Um, I, I like a nice quiet office. I don't like people stopping in to say hi.
Um, if I may? Um, if I may, ask a question, Mister Joe?
Sure.
Uh, if you already took the sign down, are you indicating that you're already on the site and you're already occupying space?
We are occupying some small space on the interior of the shop, but um. That's, that's really it. We haven't moved over panels or anything yet.
And they were there mostly to, uh, from what you passed in to do our, our work on the siding and, you know, the stuff that we had passed. But we haven't got started yet. But that's what, that's what we started at. With them being there.
Yeah, we, we have to re- uh, renovate the, the, the office space before we can use it.
And from its days as an auto body shop, um. Uh, where there are hazardous spills or. Um, threats to the environment that would need to be cleaned up. Where in, in, would we be removing that threat by going to this non-conform? Would this make this less non-conforming because we were removing that threat? Uh, Karen, I see you speaking, but you're muted.
You're muted, Karen.
Yeah, Karen, you're muted.
So we did the phase one, phase two, and we'll have to do a phase three before, like, we were to sell it to them, but. Well, then we had um, all the water, all the neighbors tested, our well tested three times and there was nothing. Nothing there. It was all clean. So that's as far as we got, but in order to actually sell it, if they want to buy it, we would have to do the phase three. So we're, we're not that far yet, but so far we have tested all the water in the neighbors and everybody's clean.
But what you're saying is that this particular use probably does not involve. The kind of pollutant chemicals that an auto body shop does.
Right, the auto body and a dry cleaner are the only people that have to do anything like that. The phase three, phase two stuff. Anybody else is less invasive.
Uh, Bill Freeman.
So uh, uh, this is Ann's, and is it your understanding that you think that, that it should be a lesser of uh? Environmentally damaging if they were just parking a couple of trucks with panels in the back and, and one or two pickup trucks in. In the parking lot is that what you think is their case?
Uh. The regulations are silent on environmental damage. I would say in terms of the use that they're asking for. They're asking for technically a use that is more non-conforming than the previous use. Because they're including the parking of commercial vehicle, vehicles and. Outdoor storage, which is currently prohibited in the residential zones.
We had that at the auto body shop already, the outdoor storage. There was, we always said. Vehicles, they would drop them off, you know, in the middle of the night with tow trucks and it was al- always, it was an auto body shop. So they were always.
Cars are, cars are different than materials in the ordinance, so.
Yeah, but these are, they're not materials. They would be.
So could we, could, could we go back to the? Can we go back to the satellite photo for a second?
Yeah.
The letter says specifically storage of lumber and wood panel forms on site. And the storage of commercial vehicles on site. So I'm just addressing what's in the ordinance. The ordinance does not allow. It allows one commercial vehicle, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Finish.
Okay.
Allows for one commercial vehicle in the residential zone and does not allow for lumber and wood panels. So the question is. Whether this is more non-conforming or less, I would say to the commissioners themselves, this is more non-conforming.
Bill.
Well, then is there any, I, they did mention something in, something I read earlier today in, in the, in the letters and things about indoor storage. Is there? Is there an indoor garage that these vehicles could be parked in or is, I mean, you know, is. Is that something that then would eliminate that, Ann? If it's inside and not visible or is it still considered?
Yeah, so I mean, that's your determination. Um, the ordinance allows for one commercial vehicle. Um.
Outside or?
Outside.
Outside.
Um, and no, and the approval I wrote with, was with a condition that no storage of materials exterior. To the building be allowed because that would be. More conforming, less non-conforming. But if the desire and the need is. To store materials outside such as lumber and wood panel forms. Then you, the commission have to make the determination of whether that's more or less. Non-conforming.
Yeah, when I read, I didn't understand, I, I, I was under the impression that the form trucks and things like that would be at another location, that this was mostly for an office. So I'm, I'm a little confused.
Can, can we just define the, I mean, I. You know, i- if this is gonna be. Not, you know. Gonna become. More non-conforming. And there's only one commercial vehicle, um. I, I, I just don't, I just don't get this. I mean, it just, it just doesn't.
So. I'm, I'm not sure the question, John. I'm. Like, it's basically our determination. It's, it's similar. We've had other things like this before where we just have to make a determination of whether we think the use is. Uh, less con- less conforming or more, you know, more non-conforming, basically.
Well, let me ask you a question, uh, or let me see if I could frame this in a way that I understand. Right now, it's permitted for a auto body repair place. And I have visited places like this, not this one. Uh, from time to time. And I mean, there are vehicles everywhere, pieces of vehicles and. Vehicles that are partially disassembled, this, this, you know, taken apart, I mean. It, they're just all over. And. So the question is if that is replaced by. Uh, three or four commercial vehicles. Uh. I, I don't know that one is more conforming than the other. I mean, I.
Okay. Um, how will we open it up to public comments on this item? Uh, if you would like to make a comment, then raise your hand to the Zoom platform or wave at your camera. Got a couple of hands up. So the first one I see is Enrique, uh, Jacundo. I butchered that, my bad, but can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, no, you're doing great. And I'm Enrique Juncarelli. I live at sixty-two Cardinal Drive in Guilford. And I'm in neighbor, in the neighborhood of um, the property in consideration. And I want to speak in favor for the application in the terms that. Um, the concrete, um. Uh, company will not manufacture or operate any concrete. Uh, processes on site. They are all by definition done at a client's. Uh, facility. And that uh, my experience with a previous use of the auto body operation were. Um, one of uh, noisy machinery happening on the shop. And many, many body parts of different cars uh, scattered on the east side. Uh, some of them occasionally belong to one of my cars. And um. And I, I don't see there, there, if, if you take a pro, I want to say freedom of use. Your property as you see fit.
Planning and zoning meeting.
Um. I, I want to say that um. Uh, this is, this is equally or less non-conforming than the previous use. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Keith Bishop, you have a comment?
Yeah, um, good evening. Keith Bishop, twenty-five, that'll be joined. Um, in favor of the application to be changed over to allow the Wedeman family to have their operation. Um, the scope I would. I am taking it from what I have seen here and what's online. Um, it's definitely going to be more favorable for the town in terms of the use and the activity level. And we need to encourage uh, local businesses to stay here in Guilford as opposed to then. Finding in places that are outside farther, which means less employees can live in town or have farther to, to travel. Um, this section Route eighty has um, several other commercial. Places, uh, corner seventy, uh, seventy-seven doesn't have any. Now, it did used to have at the very corner. There was a um. Salon shop there. You go to the corner Route eighty and Long Hill Road. That's where the town will be building their public works uh, facility. If that stays on target. There's a gas station there now. Go down to Little Meadow Road, the corner there. We've got a motel and also a small shopping mall there. Um, this here I think will um, be fit in with the neighborhood and look better than what it was and. Have some other usages and a turn into um, just, you know, more houses and in order to build houses, you need concrete. And footings and foundations and how far away are you going to be having out of town services to do those type of jobs? So. I'm in favor of granting down the permission to, to carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other public comment on this item? Any, any other follow-up from commissioners? Yes, sir.
I just, can we just go back to the satellite image real quick?
Yeah, right now there's nothing on there. Yeah.
So that, that paved area in the back of the building. Um, is where we're going to have just a small stockpile of lumber that you can't see from the road. Um, we like to keep it clean and neat. As, as far as materials go, it's not like we're going to be having, you know, piles and piles of uh. Of, of styrofoam and, and other building materials scattered all about. It's going to be pretty controlled to that little section right back there. Um, and as, as we're talking about a, a pile of two by eights, uh, another pile of two by tens. So it's, it's not, uh, it's not very extensive.
Um. Okay. So, Ann, my thought on this is. If we were to, if the commissioners were looking to approve. What's, what specifics will we put into the special permit modification to confirm that it is? Uh, in terms of how many vehicles are allowed? That one's pretty easy. We can just say. I mean, Zach, you're, you're saying you don't need more than two vehicles on site, right?
Uh, to, I, I'd say three would be great. If it's two where, where you guys draw the line, that's, that's understandable.
Okay, and then as far as materials and how would, how would we specify? Materials, we would say like it has to be behind the building or something like, what, what can we kind of say?
Yeah, I mean, you can write any condition you want to. I. I do need to advise you that the storage of more than one commercial vehicle violates the ordinance. The current ordinance. And storage of a material also violates the ordinance, so. Is actually creating a more non-conforming situation. But uh, you're allowed, you're the commission, you can say. You could put whatever, um, you could change those additional conditions. To read any way you want. I just gave you suggested lan- language, but if you want to allow. Three commercial vehicles, you could do that. Um. I, I would advise you, and I'm not a lawyer, but I would advise you that, um. Creating an additional non-conformities here could be problematic legally.
Well, okay, but. I mean, aren't you also taking away non-conformities? So where, what's like?
Yeah.
Legally, what are we talking about?
Standards are, you're trying to, to. Always make legal non-conformities more conforming over time as opposed to less.
Right.
Over time.
So, but that's a subjective process, right?
I, I just needed to say that on the record.
Okay, but again, that's. But still, it's our, it's our responsibility to de- basically to determine whether we as a commission think that it's less conforming. Then. And I mean, certainly, we want your, we value the tablature's opinion on such things. So that's why you've stated it, so. For sure. Uh, Bill?
You're on mute, Bill.
You're muted, you're muted, Bill.
Apologies. Um, I just wanted Zach to understand that, you know, the. Trucks that hold the forms are also considered vehicles, so I don't know. What, I know from my experience, you know, there. That would count as one of the three or two. So you want to make sure that we are clear on that. And I did use to take vehicles to lanes as Mister Enrique did. And it was not a pretty uh, well-run operation. So I'm, from my perspective and per the neighbor and uh, Keith, I think it would be less. Uh, non-conforming if there's a less of an eyesore and. Trucks and parks and things and everything all over. So I'm inclined to be in favor of this as long as. Everybody understands how many vehicles and I don't want Mister Wedderman to. And I, you know, have somebody say, oh, you're over the limit or something. So I just want him to be clear as to what. Number of vehicles and what types of vehicles he'll be putting there.
Alright, thanks, Bill. Larry?
Yeah, even though it's not uh, uh, an issue, conformity versus non-conformity. Uh, I think the environmental impact does give a mitigating factor. So if we're going to make a more, greater non-conformity by storing some lumber. Out of view behind the building, um, uh, I appreciate that. It's not as polluting as an auto body shop and. Uh, even though that's not strictly in the, in the ordinance, I think of it as a mitigating factor if that's. Um. An appropriate thing to do.
Okay. Alright, uh, if you don't have any other questions or comments, um. And I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Ted. Give me a second. Second from Bill. Uh, we have motion second to close. Larry Zolo?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And also, yes. Um.
Mister Chair, would it be helpful if I brought up the draft report so you can take a look at that as you're discussing?
Yes, please.
Okay, be just a moment.
Alright.
Do I have the wrong thing up? What are you seeing right now?
No. It's, this is correct.
Okay, I want to go to the second page where I, the two conditions in the yellow are. Probably what you want to talk about, but.
Um, excuse me, uh, uh, could, could you enlarge that? So. So as elderly folks can read it.
How small is it on your screen?
It's pretty small.
I don't know why that's, okay, hold on, give me a second.
It's hard, just FYI, Larry, it's hard to do on Word.
Yeah, there, there's a slider bar on the bottom uh, right.
Yep.
That's usually easy to use. Yeah.
Just hit the plus button with your.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Also command plus and minus enlarges your screen.
Yes. I don't like using keyboards, unfortunately, Bill. I love using my keyboard, but people hate it.
Shortcuts.
Yeah. Um, okay, so work commissioners feeling in terms of uh, no construction vehicles. Versus one, which is allowed versus two or three?
I, I think we should go for three.
Uh, it, ma- may I interject one other thing?
Sure.
There's a very um, specific definition in the ordinance of. Uh, what a construction vehicle is, so it may be helpful if I bring that up as well.
Sure, yeah, that, that would be good.
Trucks are not a construction vehicle, but let me.
Oh, so you're talking about load front-end loaders and bulldozers?
Excavators.
Yeah.
Excavators.
Um, let me bring this up.
Uh, I also think it has to do with the plating of it, whether it's plated as a commercial vehicle or not. I don't really know for sure, but that.
Okay, can you see this screen with the trucks circled?
Yeah.
Okay, so commercial vehicles are. Not full-size pickups, those are not generally not considered under the ordinance of commercial vehicles, so. You can see what this says.
So I have a question then for Zach is uh most of the vehicles that are. Trucks are gonna be pickup trucks, is that correct?
Yes, we have um two construction vehicles currently, um judging by this. Everything else we have, is everything else we have are like your basic uh pickup truck.
The two that you have, are they circled in red or they circled in green?
We have two form trucks that would be in red.
So those are the form trucks?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's fine, and you're gonna park them in the back?
Yes, and and again, the one of those form trucks. I'd say seventy-five percent of the time stays on the job, it gets delivered to the job and stays there until it moves to the next job.
Right. I'm in favor of uh what Ted had said, with a total of.
Alright, so and we would, if we were to allow the uh two in red, we would say two.
I you're you're doubly violating the ordinance here, I'm not even sure, um I think you have to call it a class. Three or higher vehicles, you would have to give a number of class three or higher vehicles allow.
Okay. Alright.
Because they're currently prohibited.
Yep.
I'm gonna go back to the report if that's okay.
Sure.
So the the form trucks would be class three trucks, is that correct?
Well, I mean, they were grouped together as three or four.
Yeah.
In that table.
That's, you know, form truck is. A bigger vehicle.
Okay. Um, alright, we know with Ted's, any other feelings from commissioners, number of vehicles? And so we would figure out the. Um, in this instance, and we would figure out the exact correct language, but basically you understand the intent of.
I would appreciate if somebody made a motion to um amend. The staff report with very specific language about what it is you wanna allow.
Yep, we will do that, as let's just talk about the storage of materials and what we wanna do there.
I have another question for Zach, is there any reason that you can't store your two by tens and two by eights inside the building, I mean, it was a garage, it has garage doors, correct?
Uh, it it does, and and we could, um. It just would get a little, I think a little tight in there, we have like a meeting space. Or we're trying to set up a meeting space and we have other other supplies like nails, anchor bolts. Indoor stuff, gen- generally the two bys are kept outside.
No, I know, I understand.
Well, if we were to modify eight to say. That materials external to the building have to be uh stored. Yeah, in the back of and in in a way that is not visible from the road.
Okay.
And we could make it specific to uh. Two by eights or um, I forget Zach what size wood, but to make it. Language that only uh uh boards could be scored back there. Two by twelves, whatever.
I mean, the I, can I just add? You know, even even though this is right near Route seventy-seven where there's a stoplight. Most people drive by this. At thirty to forty miles an hour, I mean, if we're trying to prevent a something unsightly. Most people drive by lanes, auto body shop.
I get that, but there's also neighbors that live that have backyards.
Don't even know it's there.
Sure, there's also neighbors that have backyards and and the whole point of the of what we're doing right now is we're just trying, it's a. Non-conforming lot that we're trying to make less less non-conforming, right, and so. If they were, it's great that this is the current plan to use, but if we're gonna approve this, it needs to be approved in a way that like. The next person that tries to move in and utilize the space is required to only be able to do the same thing. Or less, right, so that's why, that's the only reason why we're putting these restrictions in there.
So if I'm understanding it from what Zach has said, there's just two form trucks, so we could limit the. The last three to just two, and then the rest of them were just pickup, regular pickup trucks, so they're not under that.
Correct.
I would, I I I'm sorry, but I would suggest that we limit the commercial. Uh, the the form trucks or the commercial trucks or however you wanna call them. To three, he's got two now, but hopefully the business is successful and expands at some point. And we don't want him to have to move just because he can't. Uh, park his equipment uh at the site.
Yeah.
That that is actually why I said three, so I I appreciate that that comment.
That's fine. So what we're saying is we're gonna allow three class three vehicles to be parked in the rear and the storage of lumber. In the rear, out of sight, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we're big enough footprint for that?
Yes.
We good size back there.
Uh, okay, so would someone like to make a motion uh to adjust? The, what are we calling this officially, Ann, an approval notice?
Yeah, it's not a letter, so notice is fine, yeah.
Um, so to, we're going to amend the approval notice. I would like to make a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion to amend the approval letter to uh delete. Number seven and eight under the uh additional conditions. And replace them with a number seven that says uh that uh. No more than three class three vehicles uh can be stored on site. With storage uh. Away towards the back of the uh facility. And that eight uh is eliminated.
Okay, give me a second.
Second.
Alright, uh, any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm wondering if eight should be uh restricted to lumber.
I think that's what he said.
So it's longer, it it's longer and and forming materials, so yeah.
Yeah, forming materials aren't necessarily lumber, but they're. Uh, yes, so.
So does eight need to be modified to uh reflect that fact?
Yes.
Alright, I'll amend it to say we'll add eight. And they'll say no storage of materials exterior to the building with the exception of. Lumber and forming materials.
Right, okay, thanks. Another discussion. Uh, we have a motion approval in a second, uh, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And also, yes. Uh, alright, and next one?
The next item is four eighty New England Road, map eighty-four lot thirty-four is uh our five. The African owner is Sarah Delventura on behalf of Bishop's Orchards. This is a special permit to allow non-agricultural ancillary uses for section six. Point one F point one Louis, I hope those are ones and not elves, but I welcome on that.
Alright.
Hey, hi guys, Sarah Delventura, um. On behalf of Bishop's Orchards, we are looking to add to our agretainment, what we call our agretainment area at four eighty New England Road. Where we, um, this is where we host, it's up by Guilford High School, where it's a hundred and forty acre piece of property that we host. That's where we do pick your own apples, um currently we do our pick your own pumpkins up there now. Um, and a number of other wagon rides, our corn maze is located there. Um, and one of the things, some of the things that we're looking to add specifically, um, it's what's called a mega slide, um, is. Considered when working with Jamie back when we went for a building permit for the. Structure for it, it was considered kind of non-non-farm use um in the. Previous regulations, so we are looking to. Now that the new regulations have been passed and there is a section in there that would allow for this, um, we're looking for approval to um expand that area to. Non-farm activities but are considered farm activities in the current day for a lot of farms across the country. Um, other activities that we do there, we have a corn pit, little building that kids play in corn kernels as opposed to sand, we have a pedal cart track. Um, a bubble barn, uh, we have a couple of jump pads. Um, we have an apple train that's pulled by a tractor for kids, um, was used this past weekend at the Little Folks Fair. Um, so simple activities, nothing crazy, they would run during the hours of um anything. Open to the public for our pick your own hours is the same time they would run, which typically ends uh by six P M during the fall as as late as we go, um, due to lighting.
Um, do we have any site plans or photos or anything to look at?
Yep, I can bring up um the application, we just second. Second, sorry, my screen is getting weird.
Great.
Can you see that full screen, cause I can't?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so, so do you wanna walk through these slides and I'll advance them?
Sure, um, and there's some other um slides too that may, but this is trying to think, did if you wanna go into the. Yeah, they're still loading, but that's, I mean, that's fine, Ann, if you wanna start on that one, I'll repeat it. Um, so in the one, it's really small now, um, to see there on the in the middle of the screen there, that is. If you look at the the right, the bottom right corner um of the of this kind of Google, this Google Earth image. Is that's the New England Road, that's where the entrance is off of New England Road into the property. Um, and along the tree line there at the bottom where you kinda see the parking, that's the road that we have going into the property. Um, there's designated parking areas for approximately eight acres of parking that we have, um, specifically during the fall season, we're talking September and October when. It pick people come out to us to pick apples and pumpkins, um. In the yellow outlined area there, that is what we're designating as the kind of what we're calling the agretainment area. Um, some of it is farmed on right now, we have peach trees up at the top, um, left-hand side of that box. Um, and currently right now where you see, obviously there's two shadows, cause it's different times that Google Earth took these images. Um, the lighter box in the right-hand corner um on the top there is the strawberries and partially our corn maze. Um, over time, it's evolved, we will be expanding the corn maze and changing the shape a little bit as we remove strawberries from the field. Um, biggest area, this is the area that we would designate, we're not currently using it all, but we wanna be able to have the ability to. To move things as needed and to conform to the the needs of the business, specifically crop rotation plays into a big part in this. Um, certain like strawberries, for example, um, those have, those fields need to be rotated every three to four years, so. That's why we we have a bigger area set for it, but this would, it would be contained to this area to be able to continue farming without. Interruption on the rest of the property, um, it's kind of all centralized with parking. Um, as far as, we don't have any outdoor lighting, we do have electricity that we put in, um, went before you guys last year, um. That was brought up for the building, um, but we do not have any outdoor lighting at this time, um, nor do we have any plans to, um. So everything, like I said, mentioned is going to be during daylight hours, the earliest we open. Um, is eight thirty A M this time of year for for pick your own crops, but this would mostly be summer and fall months, and so that's usually an eight thirty, nine A M start at the earliest. Um, trying to think what else here, um. Porter potties, um, we don't have any, we don't, do not have septic up there, um, we are using porter potties. Um, and those are moved into different areas around the property, not only for our staff and farmer, you know, the farm workers to use. Um, over the course of the the entire property, um, but also for our customers ease of convenience too, so. Those can move too, depending on what we're doing and what we're picking, we move them all over, kind of depending on where people are in the field. Um, as mentioned, the activities, some of the things that we have, we've got the hay pyramid, um, that we've done for years, we used to do do it down by the Little Red Barn. Um, now that, all the activities that we had down there have moved up to this area, so. Um, this is a picture last year when we were kind of just kind of transforming the area with the simple, simple activities. Um, before it got started, but that's again marking the area um of the agretainment, uh, and you can see the corn maze in there as well. That's the pedal cart track. Um, corn crib. Um, the area, go ahead.
Nope, go ahead.
Um, the area that is circled at the top left of the screen would be the site for the, what we're calling, the what's the called the mega slide. Um, it's a two-lane slide, um, that kids go and adults um can go down, it's um a two-bride. Um, and there's an example of exactly what it looks like, so. Um, you know, we will be built, putting through a a, an application for a building permit, we have engineered plans for the platform so they can get up to it. Um, and then again, on the left side of this picture, in that area, it's a rocky ledge area, kind of is not, we can't farm there, we can't do anything with that land. That's where we've designated for the slide to go. And then you can see the parking in that picture too, where, when, you know, it's not a formal, it's not paved gravel, you know, there's, there's some rock in some areas, we've had to fill in just because of. You know, ruts and stuff like that, very minimal, but that's, that's the parking for the fall time. Typical to what we've always done on farmland.
One question that comes to mind, Ann, is we have. The, obviously with, in the application, it looks like there's a list of things to in that. Uh, is included, but not to, or I forget the language that it said there, but like. You also wanted the ability to do other things that aren't listed, I think, and my question is. How do we put in here something where this specific thing? Exceeds that list and needs to come back to either a special permit modification or. Building permit or whatever.
Yep, ap- apologies, they're vacuuming in the office, so, um. I can bring up, I drafted a uh draft approval notice. I could, there are a number of conditions there that I think can be um tweaked by the commission, but. Um, let me.
At that point.
Um, but, um, I have in those additional conditions, which we can talk about later, um, that. You know, a proposed condition would be that substantial changes to the agretainment activities. Besides those listed in the application will be required to apply for modification of the special permit.
Yeah, so how? Okay, we'd have to figure out like what the, what the, what's that line then, right? Cause it's a big, the reason I'm asking Sarah is just cause it's a huge area, right, so, um, but I mean, I guess. Certainly, if if whatever you were gonna do requires a building permit, then that probably crosses the line into needing a special permit modification, Ann, would you say that?
Yeah, I would agree, that's reasonable.
Okay, um.
Question is, all of this is existing as 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 of last fall?
It, this has been, there's been a couple of seasons that we've been doing, doing these active, some of these activities, the big thing that brought it to. To attention was the mega slide, um, we had purchased it two years ago. Um, went to get the building permit for it to put it up, and that's when Jamie and we kinda said, oh, like it's non, you know. She came in question with the regulations, she said it's in the new regulations and she wanted to wait and not as ha- not have a supply for. Um, put the permit in because of the fact that the new regulations were underway, so it's been two years in the in the waiting, um, for this. That's probably the biggest thing that we 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 would look that that we would look to have, again, it's. Non-farm use, other things we've got are hard, you know, like I said, there's a hay pyramid, we've always done that down on Route one, um. The hay maze, the corn maze, corn pit, a bubble barn. I mean, there's buckets of bubbles for kids to, to use bubble wands on. I mean, nothing that we're doing is looking to be extravagant or, or anything crazy that, you know, we're not putting roller coasters in or a Ferris wheel.
Sarah, this, this is Sean Cosgrove. So do you expect the activities to be seasonal? And secondly, have you figured out what kind of traffic patterns would occur on New England Road?
So I mean, I can't imagine that the traffic patterns would change any more than what they already are in the, in the fall for people coming up to pick your own apples. I mean, there's, it's that's, I mean, that, that's, that's why we, we have that stuff there is because the traffic's already there. It's just to enhance the customer's experience while they're, while they're there and to, to prolong their, their stay and their visit with us on the farm.
But, 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 but these activities would be, would be seasonal.
So I'm sorry, that was the first part of your question. My apologies. Yes, they'd be seasonal, um, summer and fall. Right now, currently fall, we haven't set up the area or anything. There's certain things that are already there, but we're not open for, for the summer at this point. We would like to extend into the summer if possible, just to run concurrently with pick your own strawberries, blueberries, things that we already have going on up there. But at this time, you know, the predominant season is the fall, September and October.
I mean, the idea is that people could come and do a variety of things, not just their own berries and fruits, but to engage in a, you know, recreational activity.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
Bill Freeman?
Yeah, I just was curious about the traffic. I'm glad you brought that up, Sean.
So let me dovetail off of that then, because you know, this is a special permit mod, so we're talking about everything and I I, maybe Anne can help talk about my question here, but is, is I get that we don't have to do formal parking, that it doesn't necessarily have to have like a full-on number of parking spaces and all that stuff regulated. But at the same time, is there, have you guys brought the fire marshal or, or whatever onsite to look at? The on and off again, and, and whether you need two ways to get onto New England Road instead of the one? Or that, that drives kind of like, and the reason why I bring this up and, and you can tell me uh, what you kind of think you are planning on doing, but you know, last year it rained multiple weekends in a row. I probably don't have to remind you of such things. And then the first weekend when it was really nice, that place was cramped, like absolutely crammed. And it was, it was a little I, I felt like it was a little touchy in terms of getting in and getting out without having to squeeze past people on that little driveway.
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're currently working on just, just kind of expanding that a little bit, just to that, that driveway, just so it's a more defined, you know, route in and out. So there is more space. We do have it, one entrance and one exit, but there is one main road that goes into it. We will be working on traffic patterns. We've already discussed getting, I mean, the, the, the rain, sky, I don't, I, I hate talking about last fall. It was, it was, it was terrible for us. But I mean,
Why everyone at the same time?
Exactly. It's not going to be like that this year. That's my, our, our hope. That, you know, and it also, you know, prohibits, you know, with muddiness and things like that. And so that it slows things down, but we are, we are working with that and and, and trying to expand and make that much more conducive for people and comfortable for, for, for the parking and the ease there. One of them is an expanded, one of the, one of the areas marked on the, the map that Anne had pulled up for parking has never been parking before. It was strawberry land. And that field is going out and we've got, we just planted new strawberries somewhere else because of the crop rotation and that we are not going to put back to strawberries that we're going to designate that for, for additional overflow parking that we've never had before.
Okay. How do we? I don't know, maybe some of the other commissioners have dealt with this before in past times, but is there? How do you handle, you know, life safety basically? On us, on a farmland site that's being used for, for this.
Can I ask a question, please? I'm a resident on New England Road.
Sure, we'll, we'll open it up for public comment in a second. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, if I could just interject.
Sure.
If you look at this section of the ordinance, there is a line that says, and I'll quote this as point two. It shall be the responsibility of the owner to provide adequate off-street parking for the activity. Provide safe and adequate access and egress and to manage traffic flow as it may be necessary. That's as far as the ordinance goes. Given that it is special permit, you could add, add, you know, additional language there, but it isn't very specific about how to achieve this goal.
Okay.
And we've, just, just to expand on that, I mean, we, we, we have the staff that we hire for parking. So we do have parkers in the parking lot, moving people, making sure people are moving safely, watching children. We try to designate certain, we, we changed the parking direction last year specifically for ease of cars backing out to make sure that the, the rows were wider. So we may have lost a few parking spaces last year. Not many, but just to, just changing the direction so that there was that safety consideration. You know, I hate saying it, but we did, and it was not a farm accident, but we did have someone have a medical emergency in the parking lot last year. You know, it took that into consideration, the fire trucks, there's egress stuff in the areas for them to, fire trucks to get in. They've been on the property multiple times. Even to the time where someone called from the middle of the corn maze because they got lost and that they felt nine one one was the best place to call. So it's, there's, I mean, they, I mean, they've, they've been up there during the busiest of, of days up there and, and understand the flow. So and, and safety is obviously our biggest concern. Obviously anything is a liability to us as, as business owners. So we will, we will comply in every way to make sure that every guest there has their, their safety is, is comes first.
Yeah. And would, would you suggest that we have the fire marshal go look at it? Or what do you think?
But that wouldn't be out of the question. You could, you could ask the applicant type of walkthrough with the fire marshal at the beginning of the season when the, you know, the actual parking areas to be used.
Just plan out, okay, well, this is where our fire lane is going to be. You know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
This is the turnaround because those trucks need turnarounds and whatnot, right? So at least so that the fire marshal is comfortable that if he does have to go to the site, he, he can get in and out how he needs to and whatnot. What? Yeah. So I, that makes sense to me that at the beginning of the season, you would just bring the fire marshal out to, to check things, especially because it sounds like you, you're going to make enhancements, you're going to make adjustments so that lets us feel comfortable that every year, you know, it's, it's okay for the fire, fire and ambulance. The other question is semi-related again, because sorry, my background in construction, that's why I'd have to deal with apartment buildings and whatnot. And egress is a big thing. And is there anything about egress from a fenced-in area? Because I, I'm not sure I, Sarah, I'm not sure last time, last year I was there, I'm not sure I saw like emergency exits. And I get from a security perspective, why you wouldn't put, put them in, but I feel like you might want. I don't know what we would say, if there's any thing we can stipulate there and to, to say that it's safe to be in there. And if, if somebody, if everyone needed to get out real fast, would they be able to?
Sorry, Scott, can you, are you talking about the, the agretainment area, the fenced-in area?
The big fenced-in area, yeah.
Yep. So there's, sure, there's, there's two gates there opposite that where the entrance is into the agretainment area at the other end. At the top where the mega slide is that area, that end of the field, there is a gate, gate with millings with a driveway. That's actually how an ambulance got in there for someone had an allergic reaction to it. There is, yep.
So is it like, hopefully it's not like padlocked. There's a way for people to open it if they need to get out, like quickly.
We have, we have staff members that are over there for that, for that reason, there is a lock on it so that people aren't sneaking in without paying.
Yeah, I understand that part, but I don't know. Okay.
I still have questions, Scott.
Sure, Bill.
So I'm not as concerned about the parking up on the site. I mean, eight acres of parking is a lot of parking. I'm concerned about the egress back onto the, I'd assume that's a secondary that it, that you enter in and out, into and off of, you know, to get in and out of the site. What? What's it? I've never gone in there. I don't know what it's like. I don't know what it's like on a busy day. Is it a lot of traffic? Is there, do you hire police to come and help get people in and out of the site? And what's, what's, what's the situation?
So we don't hire police. We've talked to the police department many times in regards to different properties in, in this time of year. But as far as, so police know, but we do hire staff that is in charge there. They wear vests, they have flags. And they are there to assist people parking, coming and going in traffic.
Are they actually managing the traffic onto the main road there that you access?
They have not managed the traffic coming onto the road. Usually, so in the past, we have not had, usually when we see a backup on New England Road is people who are knocking down the gate to, for us to open the gates at the, at the morning hours who want to be the first ones there to, to pick apples and, and do whatever. So usually there's a, there's a quick backup there. And again, not all the time. And then we did have the experience last year where it rained every single weekend. And there was a day, you know, everybody decided finally we had a sunny Sunday, I think it was, and everyone decided to come out and get their fall activities all done at one time. And that we saw a backup on New England Road at that time, trying to get vehicles in.
Has there ever been any traffic incidences as people enter or exit back onto the highway?
Knock on wood, we have not had any incidents.
Have you ever thought of a plan of only allowing people to turn right into the site, not turn left into the site? Or you just, you haven't had an experience of backup, so it hasn't mattered?
So we haven't had that. Well, so we haven't had it. That's why years ago we put in the, the entrance directly across from school side there so that that was an entrance only because the other one that's further down is angled. It's a very hard turn to get in to take a left-hand turn off of New England Road onto it. So we left it. So it was a perpendicular entrance and it's wide enough for two cars. So if we needed to go in and out of that way, which we did in previously, it was possible, but it's a two-lane entrance only. Perpendicular off of New England Road. We haven't thought about doing just a, to circle traffic around and it, it, I mean, is it possible? Yes. It's just, you know, a lot more signage to get people to try to flow around or turn around in the high school parking lot and wait to pull out there or go down school side and over flag marsh and back up. It's just a little trickier.
All right. Any other questions, commissioners, before we open up to public comment?
Basically, what we're approving is the slide thing essentially.
Well, it's a special permit modification. The, the reason why it's coming to us is because of the slide. Yes, but you know, it's
Basically, everything else that there is already under a special permit, correct?
Well, only, yes. Well, no, it's not already under a special permit. It was, it was put in based off of the current regulations allowed.
Everything that Sarah has been permitted at this point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was an outbuilding that got permitted because it was farm use and it had a building permit and all that, but the, you know, the fenced-in area and all those play structures you saw, those were considered to be part of. Okay. I mean, and you can correct me if I'm speaking wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's the course events there.
I don't have the back history on this, so we just put it in as a special permit under the new ordinance for all of the agretainment activities.
Okay. Just to, yeah. And so that's kind of what we're doing is we're not only talking about the, the big slide, but also just making sure that we you know, feel like the, the use in general.
Umbrella with the new ordinance.
Uh, yeah. So we'll open up to public comment. We've got two people that have been waiting patiently. Appreciate that. So first we'll go with D. If you want to say your name and address for the record, please.
Unmute?
You're muted, yeah, but you're muted, you have to unmute.
There we go. I'm D. Jacobs, sixty-one Cherry Street, Guilford. I'm also president of Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, which is Guilford, Branford and North Branford. What farms do in order to survive is a, is a big focus of what our job is in terms of ensuring that our communities and businesses thrive. And so the push in terms of particularly our farmlands and what keeps our farms going is finding new ways to expand agrotourism and agrotainment. And so as we look at other farms in the arena, you know, others have farm stores, they add corn mazes, they add animal rides and all. This is really what allows them to get more during a season, seasons that are affected by weather, attendance affected by weather. And so I'm strongly in favor and, and the chamber strongly in favor of the growth of whatever helps agrotourism and agrotainment, particularly in this property in New England. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next hand up I saw is Steven's iPad. If you want to state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kathy Gatto and I'm at four, four, three New England Road. And I have two questions. One is the letter we received mentioned that they would be serving farm winery products. I didn't hear if that was mentioned or not.
Yeah, there's a sec, there's going to be a second application that we're going to discuss right after this one that will be that.
Okay. And then the other part of my question does have to do with the traffic on New England Road. The road is very busy already because of the high school. And whenever it's seasonal, whenever there's apple picking or pumpkins, since they moved their pumpkins, it's gotten much busier. I wondered if the town would consider additional stop signs by schoolside lane at the top where the entrance and exit to new Bishop's is currently located.
It's a great point. We can, we can certainly, I would certainly recommend proposing that to I don't know if it would be public works or engineering or just send it to our selectman Matt Hoey if you'd like. And get that that process on their radar for sure.
Thank you.
All right, Enrique. Say your name and address for the record, please. And you're muted, so you'll have to unmute.
Thank you. Enrique Zuccherilia, sixty-two Cardinal Drive. Just a brief comment to speak in favor of the application on the grounds that this builds and strengthens the our community and, and, and given the pristine reputation of the applicant as a, as a staunch supporter of our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then we have Bob in Roma is the name on the Zoom. Address, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Bob Schlitter, two oh one Briarwood Drive. And so my backyard is the orchard. And so Briarwood Drive is a very quiet dead-end street. And we've been here for about thirty-four years. Overall, it, it's very quiet except for, you know, the machinery that goes through the orchard, you know, whether the fertilizing, whatever. And we have, you know, the, the families going by and it relatively quiet. What my concern is, is that, and I, I heard the comment by the Chamber of Commerce person that do whatever we can to keep these orchards going. And I think we need to draw a line somewhere when we start getting into, and we haven't gotten there yet, but when it starts to expand to the point where it starts to intrude on people's privacy and right to a quiet neighborhood, which is why we are here and have been here for all these years. And so you did mention that there's going to be something else talked about after this, another application talked about after this, but I think we just need to be careful that, that we don't get into the point where we start bringing in machine-operated rides and things that start making a lot of noise. And if there is the intent of bringing bands in to have as a, to add to, let's say, the atmosphere of potential winery, that type of thing. I, I think that all affects the, the neighborhood and everyone on the neighborhood. So we can hear everything. It, it's amazing. I mean, it is, like I said, my the orchard is in my backyard and I can hear everything. So having something like that added to the orchard where it becomes a noise issue, that's one of my concerns.
Bob, that's a great point. Sarah, can you speak about whether we're planning on doing any sort of empathites noise or sound or anything like that?
At this time, no. And I think anything that if we did do anything, it would be under the eight days that would be permitted, that we wouldn't need to go for a special permit. For as according to the regulations, and again, it would be daytime. I know we are planning on August seventeenth as a heads up, it's a Saturday, a retirement slash succession celebration. Generation five is retired. As a heads up, it's a Saturday, um, a retirement slash succession celebration. Uh, Generation Five is retiring officially and Generation Six is taking over. Um, with, there is a chance that we have a very light band there for a couple hours in the afternoon hours. Um. But sound would be down. It's not, you know, nothing. And the reason it would be is going to be there is because we lost our little red barn. Um, so we don't have a place to, to, to host the event. Um. But besides that, that's not our intention is to, to bring music. Um, we get it. That's, you know, a spot that we've looked at in the past to do those types of things. But in a courtesy to the neighbors, um, it's that, that's exactly as, as, um, Mike, I think, sorry, can't remember his name that just spoke. Bob, sorry, Bob. Um, looking at my screen for you. Um, that, you know, we've, we've. We realize that that is a very, that's a residential area. We're not looking to, we don't, we will want to be good neighbors. We're not looking to, to drive anyone out or to be annoyed with us.
So if, uh, just to ask Sarah as a follow-up, if you were, if we were to, uh, approve, would you be fine if we put a stipulation in there about amplified music? Or noise?
If it was, y- yes, if I, I would be, but I wouldn't want it to be that we couldn't ever do it. Um, or have any, any type of music up there, but it would, I, I don't mind a, a restriction at this time. And if we had to go for a special permit to do something, I, that wouldn't be, but. I mean, I, as long as the wording was correct and that we, we weren't limited to never doing it and never playing anything. Um, I get it. You can hear the high schools. My sister lives across the street, um, on school side. And just like I'm sure Bob can hear, you know, you hear the high school when the, those speakers are there, there, have the games there. You can hear the loudspeaker there. Um, you know, it, it, again, we'd be looking at a daytime, you know, hours, um, during late. Within the ordinance, if we needed to do anything special up there for an event.
And is there, is there a minimum allowance like what Sarah mentioned? And right here.
About eight days. What, what is, could you clarify that?
Yeah, they're in the ordinance is, uh. Just gonna share my screen really quick because it's a table. I don't know why it keeps doing that. Hold on.
We can see it.
You can see it, Ben?
What am I supposed to look at though?
Section, section one point, uh, six point one point F.
F, okay.
The bottom block.
Um. You know, a special permit, it's a weird thing because the special permit is used for either conditions. For outside sound after five P M.
Right, that's correct. After five P M.
So, so you, as part of this application, you would like. Approval for one day days per county or buy a special permit basically? Or would we have to do a separate special permit for that, Ann?
Well, uh, this application is under E.
Yeah.
Um, and there wasn't anything applied for under F. Uh, but you could surely modify.
Oh, I got you. I'm sorry. So Sarah, are you saying that you want to do the one day days before five o'clock? Is that what, is that what you're saying? You fall under?
It would, I'm, no, I follow, yeah. I know these regulations, unfortunately, like the back of my head to the screen section. So it would be under F. From my understanding, we would not need a special permit because we do not have any, this, we would not be doing anything after five P M. It would be during the daytime hours when we're open.
Right.
Okay, so then you, yeah, so then you wouldn't need us to, we would just say that, um. Well, how would we word that then, Ann, to say that if they wanted to change?
Yeah, in the draft, what I put as a condition, just to confirm this, I said, no amplified sound will be allowed after five P M.
Okay.
And then we could, we could amend that and say unless.
Unless they come back for a special.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay.
But to be clear, you can have amplified sound before five P M any day, anytime?
Yeah, that, based off that regulation, yeah.
Right.
It's allowed, yes.
Alright.
Do we want to put some restriction on decibel level?
Uh, I mean, that, that falls under the town ordinance is usually how we handle that.
Good.
Um, alright, we got a couple other public comments here. Uh, Mike Toussaint, do you want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Mike Toussaint, uh, twelve fifty Long Hill Road, and I can't believe he's pronounced my name correctly. So thanks for that. Um, there, I, I have no problem with what you want to do. I think the more outdoor activities we have in this town, the better. Um, my property like yours, Bob, butts right up against. I mean, I look out my, my backyard and I see the strawberry fields. I see everything. So like my, my two biggest concerns are, is the plan to put up any additional fencing? Um, cause as you know, I mean, I know you spoke to my wife, we have seven horses on our property and I just want to make sure no one will wander off. Into our pastures, which could put the horses or the riders at danger. So that's my, my number one. And, and, I mean, I'm happy to work with you to put up some type of fencing if it works. But I know there's the access road. We don't want to block off for emergency purposes. But my second question is that access road. Um, it's right up against our riding ring. So. Is the attention to ever u- utilize that for additional to and from? Or I was really happy to hear right now you're planning on only New England Road. And I know that, that doesn't bode well for the people on New England Road, but. Because that road is so close to our riding ring, it's, we, we're concerned with the, the health of our riders and the safety of our riders. So if you could just, just answer those, I, other than that, I have no problem. I love live music. I can hear the high school anyway. So if it's music, I have no problem with that.
Um, so, uh, yes, I, can I answer that? So what Mike is talking about is, um, we have an access, we have a driveway act- access off of Long Hill Road too. Right now it's just a gated property and it's, um, Mike's property is otherwise was formerly known. It's the Song Strong property, if anyone's familiar with it. Um, Song Strong, that, that where they have the horses. Um, and I met Gretchen, Mike's wife, um, a few weeks back. And I'm actually checking out that, that driveway just to see, we kind of keep it back for, again, emergency vehicles, any exit that we need to make the, to make sure it's clear. Um, at this time, Mike, we do not have any plans to use that, um, only in the case of emergency. Not to say that it couldn't be used in the future, but if that was the case, that would be something that we would talk, be talking to you specifically about. And, and making sure that there was an agreement between us, um, with that, that it worked out for you as a neighbor, again, being courteous, um, as far as fencing. Um, we don't have any intention to that property right now, where, where it butts your property. Um, is where the corn maze will expand to. So people actually won't be able to, it'll actually, you'll, you're gonna see nothing but corn. And the corn, when the corn maze expands to that, to that section right against your property, that is fenced in. So there is no access there.
I, I thought that's where the slide was going. That's where my biggest concern.
No, further, on the other side of the corn maze is where the slide's going. Yep. So we're not letting the public walk down to that area where, where you are.
Okay, alright, great. No, thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you. And then, uh, Joel Holander. Um, please state your name and address for the record. You are muted, so you'll have to unmute. If you're still there. Alright. Uh, perhaps Joel will come back. Uh, do we have any other hands raised for public comment on this item? Seeing any?
Now Scott?
Oh, there we go, Joel. We got you. Yep.
Yes. Speak tonight, but I think, uh. I really think that great emphasis needs to be given to the fact and, and obviously it goes without saying that the Bishop family's range of activities. In our beloved town have been, from what I regard, is clean, healthy and reasonable. For a hundred and fifty years. And, uh, however, with agro entertainment, which is a fascinating new word for me. Which has just occurred primarily with, with their family only in the last ten or fifteen years. I believe that the proposal application appears to be an extension. Of the agro entertainment al- already being conducted on, on busy Route One. And likewise, i- i- on New England Road, I believe it would be. Clean, healthy and reasonable. Obviously with, uh, public safety concerns expressed tonight, those. Can be addressed as conditions and probably should be. So I heartily endorse the proposal. Before your, your commission.
Thank you. Uh, and we have Keith Bishop with the same race.
Yep, hi there, Keith Bishop again, twenty-five Minute Ridge Lane. Um, I'm wholeheartedly behind the plan that is being presented by the, my daughter and where we're continuing to go to. Um, maintain our farm and prosperity, uh, for Guilford and. Bring in, uh. Folks for picking and enjoying our farm activities here that will keep us viable as a farm opportunity. For the three hundred and thirteen acres that we have here and in, in Northford. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, I don't see any other hands raised at the moment. Last call for public comment on this one. Um. Alright, um, Andy, how's the best way for us to? Confirm the stipulations that we would do if we wanted to approve or, or deny this application?
Uh, let me bring up, um, did you close the, well?
We did not close public hearing yet.
Uh, let me bring up the draft report and then you guys can chew on that a little bit. So give me just a second.
You had it up for a second there.
Yeah, that locks it. There we go.
There you go.
Um, so this report has on, you know, the front page has our standard conditions for a special permits. The additional conditions seven through eleven were just talking points I threw in in case you wanted to. Include these or not include these, but, um, it's a start.
Okay, thank you. So we, we talked about the inflated noise already being, uh. Will be allowed, uh, not allowed after five. That's already part of what we discussed. Hours operation, Sarah, you said basically. Eight a, if, if we put it between eight A M and seven P M, it sounds like that's. Basically what you are doing. Is that correct? Yeah, okay, so.
Or, or you could say, uh, daylight hours.
Or just daylight?
Daylight hours would be appreciated.
I mean, depends on when daylight savings starts and stops and whatnot these days. It's crazy right now. Um. Okay, I guess I don't have a big problem with that. So, that's fine with me. Um. All permanent structures will require building permits, zoning permit. Prior to action, I don't think anybody's gonna complain about that stipulation and Shelby. Hand responsibility owner to provide adequate off-street parking. We talked about this one as well, uh, safe and adequate. Um, would you add the fire marshal part of it to this, Ann, or would you, we have a separate stipulation about the fire marshal?
Um, either way, I would, you know, if you're gonna make a motion to change it, I was just saying something like. Um, an annual walkthrough with the fire marshal of the proposed. Traffic management should happen prior to.
Opening for the season.
Whatever, yeah.
Um, how would we mark that? I know Sarah just ran away, but how?
I'm here.
Um, okay, how would we mark Sarah, the beginning of your season? When would, how would we mark when the right time is for, for you to do the, the walk with the fire marshal?
Um, I'd say before Labor Day.
Okay.
The week before Labor Day, we open for the season, for the busy season for Pick Your Own Apples, um, Labor Day weekend.
Okay, so basically by the first of September?
Yes.
I guess that doesn't exactly catch Labor Day, does it? But you know what I mean?
But it's always.
Knows what I mean.
It's, it's always before Labor Day, so they.
Alright, good, perfect. Um, alright, and then let's see, substantial changes, the agretainment. Would having to come back from modification. So that's not something, that's something we discussed and that's not gonna be a big one either. Um. Commissioners, does that catch everything that we've talked about in terms of stipulations for this?
That was for me.
Um. I guess the only thing for me is, is. And Sarah, we can help. What? Uh, do we put a stipulation in there? There has to be certain amount of emergency exits or something from the, from the fenced in area? Um, or Ann, do you have any suggestions for me on, on alleviating that concern?
Well, I think if the fire marshal has concerns that they will, you know.
Yeah, he's, yeah, I get, he's in charge of the egress as well, wouldn't it be? So, okay, alright, so that'll be part of his walk then. Or at least he'll. He'll be in charge of discussing that with you. Okay. That's fine. Um.
So to be clear, can I just enumerate the, the changes and then?
Changes will be made based off the discussion that we just had.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep. Um. Alright. Uh, if we don't have anything to discuss left on that, would, would a commissioner like to make a motion? Oh, no, motion to close, uh, the public hearing on the side?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing on this.
Bill, thank you. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Second for Sean. Alright, we have a, a, a motion in a second to close public hearing, Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And I'll vote yes. Alright, um, would a commissioner like to make a motion? Um, in. For this application.
Do we just make a motion to accept, uh, stipulations as so stated?
Yeah, well, to accept the, yeah, so you, you would make a motion to, uh. For the, per the approval notice. Um, and with the additional revisions that were just discussed prior.
Okay, so I'm, make a motion, we accept. Official motion with the additional amendments as per stated. Previously.
Thanks. Who said that? That was too fast. Thank you, Ted. You turned off your, you turned off your screen. Um, okay, so discussion? Anything else that commissioners want to discuss? Um, for me, I think it's a great use. I've obviously been there. That's, uh, obviously. My young children and whatnot, but, um, I'm happy that we are, are gonna have eyes on it in terms of safety. That was the only concern that I really had in, in that area. And, uh, also happy to see that there's lots of discussions going on with neighbors and it seems like that will continue to be a concern, um, for the family. So that's something that I like to see as well. Um, any other comment, uh, discussion points from commissioners? Alright, uh, we have a s- motion in a second. Um, all in favor, Larry Rizzolo?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
And I'll also vote yes. Alright, Ann?
The next item on our agenda is four eighty New England Road. Excuse me, map eighty-four lot thirty-four, zone R five, applicant owner is Stella, Sarah Delevantura. On behalf of Bishop's Orchards, this is a special permit to allow farm winery operations for section. Six point one point G.
Okay, so hi, hi again. I'm Sarah Delevantura for Bishop's Orchards. Um. So this is, uh, last year, this, this is something we've been looking to do cur- uh, in the past. We have not been able to, I'm sorry, is there any backfeed for you guys? I'm gonna ask that first. Okay, I have it going on two devices because it looked like I was losing power, um, at my house. Um, so what we, in the past. Uh, per our farm winery license, we've only been able to with state, with the state liquor laws and permit, we've only been allowed to sell our, our. Stuff that we manufacture, our wines and hard cider specifically on, um, on the thirteen fifty-five pos- property at the retail market. That's where we manufacture and make our hard cider and wine. Um, last year it passed through the state, um, that farm wineries would be allowed to. Sell their product on other property, other property owned that was not contiguous owned by the winery. So we are looking to, um, sell wine by the glass and hard cider by the glass. Um, during the fall and for any events or things that we are doing up there, um, on the property, whether it's a farm to table dinner. And that with this permit that we would, we need the town approval and this permit first before we can apply for the liquor permit through the state. So, um, in some of the questions, I think I hope I addressed. If you saw what I wrote, um, in the, in the second amended.
Can you walk us through the specific application of what you're asking?
Yep. Um, so not seeing it specifically, but we are just asking for us to be able to sell and to serve. Our wine and hard cider on the property at four eighty New England Road while we are. Open for operation for the pick your own season when we're open to the public, um, as well as po- the possibility of private events. If we do, which we have done in the past for farm to table dinners, um, this would allow us to serve it up there as well on that property.
Is that limited to certain areas on the property or is it you're asking for, for the entire property?
So the, the whole property, if you look at the site map that I had, um, submitted, it, as Ann and I had talked, discussed.
Can you see if you can find that?
Yep, I got it.
So, yeah, it's a different site and, uh, obviously shows the parking. There's another page, so.
I have another, oh, there we go.
There it is, there you go. So this is the entire property. Again, you're looking at the far right of your screen is New England Road. The top left is the water tower. Um, and that's further up on New England Road. Again, down the south is, is Briarwood. Um. So the reason, so we have left off, you can see where the red marks are in that kind of area where we talked about with the last permit. That parking area, the entrance, the driveway, that is an area that we would not have any alcohol available. People wouldn't be able to consume it. They wouldn't be able to bring it into the parking lot, take it out there. We wouldn't serve it there. Um, everything in the back area, the reason, primarily the area would be the same area that was kind of circled in that. I say the aggravation area, kind of that hub for where we've, you know, would have a food truck or where we've sold, you know. Other food items up there during the fall season that was marked out in the last application. But the reason why it is extended on this application for the wine, for us to be able to serve up there. Is that we have done farm to table dinners, um, privately, we've done as small as a group of eight and as large as a group of, a group of fifty. Um, on the property in various spots that are further north, um, up where you kind of see that. The dirt area kind of towards the, on the north side there, like, um, up further in the orchard, yep, and circling on it now, um. That up in that area is where it's, where you can see, um, you can see, actually see Long Island Sound. It's actually the northernmost, the northernmost area in, or tip in, um, elevation, um. In south of Route eighty. So there's a beautiful view on a clear day of Long Island Sound as well as Long Island. You can see all the way out there. Um, we've done farm to tables just because of the views up there. We have a couple ponds, irrigation ponds on the property. Just because of where they're nestled in little nooks around the, around the field. We've done farm to table dinners there. So we didn't want this to, um. We're not looking to necessarily constantly serve or have this regular or have bars all over the place. That is not the intention here. The intention for the entire property is so that we've got the ability to serve alcohol if, in that area, if there is. In fact, a farm to table dinner or people are purchasing a glass of hard cider and taking a wagon ride through the orchard in the fall. Or walking and picking apples, um, to be able to do that. So, um. That's, that's why there is that extensive area. It's just, we don't want to be limited. We did this with a little red barn. We had that whole property except for the parking lot outside of the front of the little red barn. It's just gives us legally the safety. So someone is, can, walks up into the orchard and is holding a glass of wine. There, you know, we're not in violation.
Entertainment, uh, I'm, I'm having a hard time piecing together the two different. Is this just a different?
The agro entertainment, Bill, the agro entertainment is the part that's above the orange parking. So you see the orange, yeah, she's circling it right now.
This is an older photograph.
Yes.
Yes, it's Google Maps. Like, yeah, I can't, unless I do a drone footage ourselves.
I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, this is a whole nother project.
Yep, so the, it's just, so I didn't circle that because it's not necessarily, it's not staying, we don't want to restrict ourselves to the same area where the aggravation is for. Um, people to consume or us to serve alcohol. So.
So, what's this, what are the state, and we don't have to get into too many detail, but, uh, when you are serving. Do you, do they require you to like designate for each event, an area that you're going to be serving in or is it really just this entire area? I guess, I would imagine that you do restrict it because you don't want people just wandering around the whole site, right?
We, I mean, so, I mean, uh, to give you an example of where the, the whole site would come into play for, you know, kind of free walking around would be in the fall time on a set. You know, on the weekends when people purchase a glass of hard cider or wine and are walking around, um, we did it down at thirteen fifty-five. When, you know, at, uh, which is the main farm market, when we would have the pumpkin patch down there, we were selling wine and hard cider by the glass. Parents seemed to enjoy it, that their kids could have fun and the, the parents could unwind a little bit and enjoy a glass of something and not feel like they were just sitting there babysitting their children. Um, but it allowed, it, you know, allows people to go pick apples and, and do it with a, with a glass of hard cider in their hand, um. That's, you know, and, and we're not controlling as long as it's on the, you know, on the property. We don't see people wander off into neighbors' yards and things. I mean, there's a lot of trees and whatnot. So it's not like we're, we don't have any physical boundaries, but, um, if we had an event, then there would be boundaries for that event. And we don't usually see people kind of break the rules of what we're, our expectations are. The majority of, for those, for those weekends, it would be served closer to that aggravation in that aggravation area. Is where we would have it for sale by the glass, but the whole property then allows people to walk on the property, which is why it's outlined. To walk out there or for us to do a farm to table dinner and serve up there in the case of a special event.
You put in the photo of the truck. Is that thing actively driving around the site like?
It's parked right now. No, it's not actively driving. There's only a couple of people that can even drive it. Um, but yeah, no, it's not, it's, um, it's not actively driving around the site. We've brought it down, it's, um, we've brought it out to thirteen fifty. At the Little Ralph, I say the address, but, um, the little red barn area is served down there, um. So we've, that's where we've, we've, we've had it, yeah. But we had something, we'd be looking at one possible bar. It's more for the look than it is to, to drive around and, and, and hunt people down and offer them, get out and offer people something to drink.
Right, so similar to the last permanent application, certainly. We'd have in there again that if you're doing a building or a zoning permit, you'd have, that would, you know, kick another special permit modification and whatnot. Unless it was for farm use, of course, then it wouldn't hit special permit. Um, any other questions from commissioners? Before we open up for public questions. Alright, we'll open up for public questions. If you have a question, uh, I'm sorry, for public comments. If you have a comment. Um, please raise your hand through the Zoom platform or just wave on your camera and we'll call on you. Looks like Dee is getting ready to have another comment or no? Yep, uh, go ahead, Dee.
Dee Jacob sixty-one Cherry Street, I was a president of the Chamber of Commerce for Gilford, Branford and North Branford. As we've seen over the years, um, the Connecticut Wine Trail has expanded. Um, we have a number of vineyards and breweries and all that have developed using. Um, the fruits of the farms in the area, that the state has seen fit to expand. Um, the ability for farms to serve not only where they're making their, their product, but also on any. Other property that they own gives us an indication that they view this as a great way. To expand, um, farm, farm produced product. Um, I have attended a farm to table dinner up and that area years ago. It's a beautiful area and I think the idea again is people aren't going to go there because they want to go drinking. They're going to go there because a glass of wine, glass of hard cider enhances the experience. And it's a farm product, um, that comes from Bishop. So, uh, once again, I encourage the commissioners to approve.
Alright, so any other hands raised? People that comment? I'm scrolling through. Don't see anyone else. Um, Anne, anything else on this application that we needed to?
Um, just if you want to, when you pu- close public hearing, I have. Um, the additional conditions, if you want to take a look at those as well.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Seems like we don't have any other public comment right now. Alright, let's see. Apply with all state permits. Um, Sarah, I assume you don't have an issue with number seven. Hours of operation, we'll just keep the same as what we did on the last one. Um, daylight hours or do you need night time, are you planning on doing nighttime operations on this?
There, there are no plans, but I'd rather not leave, you know, if it's a, if it's a, something that we're doing, you know, after hours again. The noise thing I understand, um, but as far as if there was something to run and it was to be at dusk or daylight hours, I. I kind of hesitate to that. It's not, again, we're not looking to do this. This is not, trust me, we're all tired and we want, we don't want to be there late hours either, but. Um, if we can restrict, I mean, there are laws that we have to follow as a farm winery of when we can serve. Um, and what, with what, what hours? So if we can stay within those state regulations and laws, I, I appreciate that.
Seems like you don't have a problem with the noise advocacy part of it necessarily, but the.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I, I would assume that Anne, the intention of the additional sidelighting part of this was not having random floodlights. Kicking around at night, right?
So.
Is there some? But if they're having a dinner that happens to go past daylight times. What are you going to have, like a couple like lanterns or something, Sarah?
Yeah, lanterns, we've used those, the, the string lights too, those with the, with the bigger LED, you know, the, the yellowy amber lights that we've done and it hung in tents. And stuff like that, nothing that would be any light pollution.
Any idea, Anne, how we would differentiate between that and?
Um.
Floodlights? Or anything that would be obtrusive to neighbors, basically?
What about if you use permanent versus, you know, temporary, something like that?
Well, you can get those huge highway things if you wanted to. I don't really want to let that happen unless they come back and talk to us about it, right? So.
And I don't think they're very slightly and they're, they're loud too. So, but yes, I would, I mean, I would understand that. It's not a farm.
You could add a qualifier. I hate, I hesitate to say this, but something like robust, additional robust sidelighting or. Noise amplification will be prohibited, but then somebody has to.
Can we say something effective that would cause light pollution off this, off-site, like off the property? Can you do something like that? Would say like, uh, any lights would have to not cause a certain level of, of light level. Past the property line? Or we not have that, that power?
You have that power. Um, I'm trying to think of a, an elegant.
Yeah, that's, that's hard to differentiate.
I don't know the elegant way to say it, but you know what I'm saying, right? Like as long as, as long as the light isn't spilling over a property at a certain light level. Then no one's going to know the difference, right?
Well, you could say allow lights such as string lights or lanterns or something like that.
Or yeah, you could just list, that's probably the easiest way to handle this, honestly. It's just list a couple types of lights that are allowed.
Would, just out of curiosity, if it was something and I'm, I'm, I, again, I'm not the professional, so I'm not going to pretend to be, but, um. Something like a, like a, like a post lamp, like people would have in front of their house, like if we, if those were ever needed to be put up, like just a. You know, for a pathway or something in a specific area, it would really be central to the property in the parking area more than anything if I, if something more.
Yeah, we need, uh, I don't know, Anne, it would need to be temporary or would, would that trigger anything if they wanted something permanent?
What I would suggest is something like this, where you could say you're allowing string lights, lanterns and temporary pathway lights. All others have to come back to the commission.
But specifically, we would be allowing temporary, right, Anne?
Yeah.
Alright, is that where for you, Sarah?
I'll make, yes.
Yeah, if you wanted a picture for tape dividing, you could.
Right. Um. Alright.
We decide about the hours. I'm not clear on that.
So, it might, my, my ask would be to follow with the state regulations as a farm winery under our permit, we're not allowed to serve past ten PM.
Yeah, that sounds great. Just, um, pers- similar to number seven, it'll just be pursuant to state regs.
Regulations, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, alright, additional review by health department, maybe wired, I don't know about. What was the thinking behind that one, Anne?
Um, well, that has to do with, um, food trucks and or wine trucks, I believe, need to be inspected. And there was the question about porta potties versus septic and so it, this is a broad one. And the may is intentional.
Uh.
It's a catch-all.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure why we didn't do it on the first one then. What was the?
Uh, because that, that was.
Targeted to a specific area? Oh.
Drink, yeah.
Okay, I understand. Um, okay. Uh, the, basically, I guess my question is then like who's deciding whether or not health department reviews required? And what are they reviewing?
I mean, i- isn't this the health department's decision?
So are we just going to ask them once? Like as soon as we, if we approved this, then you send them an email saying, hey, I'm, I'm informing you. That you can review this if you want, and then that's it, Anne?
Um, yeah, but if they require follow-up, that it's on them to request the follow-up. So I don't know, I don't know if the cider truck has to be inspected every year or not. I don't know if, if you've had an inspection before. Have you ever had?
Sarah, is the health department involved in your day-to-day at like the current Route One site?
No. No, so like food, food trucks and things and, and our, and our bar that we have there, you know, we, we maintain and we've got a, we've got our permit and that's all that's. Covered if the health inspector wanted to come up and do a surprise inspection, I mean, sure, but we don't have to do anything that's required for that, for the health department.
So that wouldn't be a, that, so Anne, that wouldn't be above and beyond the normal then, right?
Correct, it's just, it's there in case it's needed.
Putting it there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't you just say instead of maybe, wouldn't you say as required if you're going to leave?
As required for health department. Um, so all permanent structures require building apartments, zoning permit, that's fine, responsibility. Obviously, yep.
Scott, I just want, on number ten, I just want to make sure that, so we've got other little, you know, as in the aggravation area on the previous application things we have, we have little like. Um, little barn, you know, playhouse size, little minimal size, but they're wood structures that are in a more permanent, but it. The, you're the right, the town regulations are for a needing to come before you as a commission if it's over seven hundred and fifty square feet. So if it's under seven hundred and fifty square feet, then we only need to.
So, yeah, Anne can adjust that stipulation in that language.
Require all permanent structures.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll fix that.
That makes sense, right, Anne? Yep.
Um, anything above two hundred square feet as far as building permit, anything below. And a zoning permit, anything below two hundred square feet, just a zoning permit.
Also, Anne, you might as well throw in there the fact that they're a farm, it's a farmland and. There are certain things that they're allowed to do without it being part of the special permit too.
And that's seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Seven fifty, not two hundred.
So I guess it's the, it's the same either way.
Yeah.
Um, alright, off-street parking, we talked about already, substantial changes to the farm, winery. Will require a modification, okay.
So what did we, number nine, how does that going to end up?
I think.
I'm going to.
And I'll talk. Striking it or are we leaving it in?
Yes.
I think we should leave it.
We're leaving it.
Well, I think we should say that additional review by the health department as required.
That's fine. Anne, do you have a problem with that?
No, that's fine.
Alright.
And can it just be in there too? I just want to make sure that on number ten, that it's per regulations. It's not all permanent structures will require. Thank you.
Yep, yep, she's got that, yep. Uh, okay, so any commissioners, anything else that we are thinking of here or did we miss anything? That we've talked about? Alright, so Anne, if you want to unshare again for me. Uh, I don't see any other hand raised or anything for public comment, so. If there is no further, uh, entertaining motion from commissioners to close the public hearing on the side.
So moved.
I think that was Sean, have a second, second from Bill. Alright, uh, all in favor to close the public hearing on the side, um, Larry Zolo?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Also, vote to close, um, anyone like to make a motion to approve the approval notice as. Uh, amended in our pri- previous conversation here.
I would move that we, uh, approve the application, uh, with the, uh, uh. Amendments that we had discussed, uh, just previously.
Yeah, thank you. So a second?
Second.
Second, Bill, uh, discussion? Anything we need to say? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, have a motion to approve with stipulations. A second, uh, Larry Zolo?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And I'll also, yes. Thank you very much for your time. And.
You.
Alright, Anne, next one?
Mr. Chair, the next item is eight Vineyard Avenue, map two lot eleven, zone R two, the applicant owner is William James Mills. This is a special permit to allow up to an additional ten percent of coverage for new deck. For section three point four point B, table notes number two. And if I could just bring that up so you can see it before we get going here, I just want you guys to know what you're looking at.
Yep. Yeah, site plan?
Yep, let me give you the, um. Okay, so you'll see in the zoning table, uh, oh, sorry. Um, under table notes number two, the commission may by special permit allow an additional ten percent of building coverage. For swimming pools, decks, tennis courts and other similar structures provided by, provided the commission determines that A. For swimming pools, decks, tennis courts and other similar structures provided by provided the commission determines that A. Such additional building coverage will not infringe on the primary sewage system or reserve area for said system. And B, the impact of the proposed construction on views. From adjacent public and private property and on the use and enjoyment of said adjacent properties will not be unreasonably affected. Um, so just a clarification that the maximum building coverage in the R two zone is fifteen percent. This allows you as a commission to allow an up to an additional ten percent, which would bring. If you went maxed it out, uh, building coverage of twenty five percent.
Yeah, current current application is fifteen percent?
Um, it's a little over, they're asking for a little over an extra five and I will bring that up as well. Uh, five point five six percent.
So five point five six above fifteen?
Yes.
But we're allowed to approve up to ten above fifteen, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to.
So we're 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 within the limits.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're.
Ass assuming those two stipulations are right.
They're going above what's allowed and you're allowed.
Right.
Something between zero and ten if you would like to do that, but they must meet those standards, so.
Um, and can you put that uh site plan back up?
Yep.
So the first standard was that it's not impending on sewer and we can see that that's not, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And the second standard is about um use and enjoyment by.
Okay.
In impingement of of views.
Right.
Alright, so when do we have to?
Yeah.
When do we have to present the certification?
That's me.
Say name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Jay Mills, uh, primary residence is eight Vineyard Avenue.
Thanks.
And my wife, uh, Dana will also be with us. Um, we're in the witching hour, so the kids might be a little hard.
Okay. So you wanna see what you're looking to do?
Yeah, so Anne, I also, if it's possible to share my screen, just to, I think visuals will help, um, is the best way to just. Like share my screen and go from there.
Yeah, try it and tell me if it doesn't work. There you go.
It's working.
Okay.
Are you seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Alright, good. Alright, so um, I'm gonna I'm make this as quick as possible, um, just a little backstory and where we've been, we're at the end of a two year. Uh, we're 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 thinking we're at the end of a two year project here, um, that started uh in September of. Twenty twenty two, uh, with the request for variance to um modify an existing home that we absolutely adored and loved. It's. The picture that you see right now. Um, it was one of the last cottages on Vineyard Point. And um, you know, we were, we went through the entire process with Z B A. We received unanimous approval. Um, for said project, um, but it was then contested or appealed uh by someone else, a neighbor, um. And it which effectively put us in a position of deciding whether or not we wanted to pursue um the appeal, you know, defend the appeal process or. Uh, consider knocking down the house and building something that was conforming. Uh, reluctantly, we 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 did decide to make the pivot um to build more conforming. So, you know, hopefully in the future, you you can knock this one off your list as being. More conforming going forward. Um, the existing house as it stands. Right here, um, as you'll see, we we tried to keep as much of the car architecture of the old house. Um, as best we could, even though we we scaled up to meet building codes and and the like, we just really enjoyed the charm of the house. Um. We uh give you a lay of the land. This is Vineyard Point, uh, where the house is located. Uh, I sort of look like Chevy Chase here with the lit house. That's the that's the exterior paper. Um, it's an R two district, as Anne had pointed out, along with other R two districts like Mulberry Point. Uh, there's Indian Point, Trolley Road and Little Harbor, I think are a few of the names and neighborhoods as well. Um, that uh that are R two specifically with relatively smaller uh lot sizes. The request that I'm going just, uh, the request that I'm going for is, um, you know, everything we have done up to this point has been conforming. We have not asked for any. Uh, ma- any anything that's outside of of the conforming uh rights and as of rights that we have. Where we uh, we sort of hit a roadblock, right? Um, despite, you know, going through all of this, we did hit a roadblock towards the. End of this project, which was how do we deal with the exterior of the house? Um, and or I should say the outdoor living space of the house. Um, we had to maximize as much of the square footage as we possibly could, fifteen percent square footage on. The size lot that we had got us to about a footprint of fourteen hundred square feet. So, you know, we were we were pretty slimmed down and we eliminated the use of a of a garage that we had prior. So, you know, no garage, just house. And in doing so, we just felt like we needed to be creative in how we designed. The house, um, the new house with regard to storage and in particular, you know, the in and outs of the house and the in and outs of having kids and and outdoor lawn stuff and all the like. So one of the things we designed, um, which worked quite quite nicely is this exterior um walkout from our basement. We blasted a basement. Um, that is full height for storage. Um, and this, you know, black space here would be the in and out of the basement um access point. It you'll see, it it's a bit odd that you'll see, um, you only see half of it and that's because, um, hang on. Here's a good view from the side. So based on the grading of the property, which sloped towards uh from the road. Roadpoint, which is to the left, all the way out to the right, which is a marsh. Um, we did have a dip in the property on the uh on this side of the property, on one other, you know, the the uh east side of the property line. And we looked at that as an opportunity to perhaps create this this storage area and. A walkout to to get in and out of the basement where, you know, we would we would be effectively trying to. To um utilize what would otherwise go into a shed or all the other household pieces, right? Um, in order for us to uh just go ahead and build a deck here, however, as you can see, um, we would then be. Uh, effectively uh exceeding um the lot coverage uh or the building coverage, I should say. By about five, five and a half percent uh per my application. This. Um, this uh footprint right here is thirty by ten. Um, if we attempted to build something that was conforming, which we have, we've got several iterations and several designs of something that is conforming. As you know, the only way to do that would have exterior stairs coming out of the out of the house, which is fine, and then being within. Uh, within two feet of adjacent grade, which we which as you'll see, these these two by fours straight across. Um, would be two feet above adjacent grade. Um, and and, you know, so uh tha- that's just as a reference point. Our desire for the special permit. Our special permit request, hang on one second. So the yellow line is two feet above grade, okay? So if we built a deck that was conforming, it would be two feet above the grass here. And it would, if we went straight to the house and connected it to the house, it would be at at the at the yellow line. Our desire was rather than taking this, you know, a thirty by uh. Thirty by twelve uh footprint and going out into our lawn, we thought naturally, why don't we spin it and put it up against the house? Um, to do so would obviously cross over the the walkout to the garage. So hence the reason why we've we've were coming to you asking for a shift upward to the red line. Which puts us over uh the twenty four foot requirement to to remain conforming and effectively triggers this request for a special permit. Um, so our request here is to build a a deck that is twelve by thirty off the back end of the house. Um, it does not exceed any further than this neighbor's house here. Um, and we are currently approved as well. For a balcony off of our primary bedroom. It is, uh, it is considered a projection at the moment with a three foot deck that we can access, um, and that's on our current building permit. Our desire was to extend that out, um, creating more space. Up there, but really also a lot more privacy for the first floor deck because, you know, naturally sound and and visual. Having something that's over overhead is much better, but the active living space is really just this first floor. The second floor, as I said, this is a bathroom here. This is a master bedroom or a primary bedroom, I should say, with uh the doors do not are not accessed from any. Common space within the house. So, you know, the intent of the use is really a pretty minimal, you know, a cup of coffee in the morning and really enjoying. You know, the view. So here is. The view from that those two doors on the second floor, um, and so we are acting to to go out ten feet instead of the. Three that we are currently approved for.
Is this a covered deck or a? Comfort deck or is it a just a normal deck?
Uh, for the second floor?
For the first floor. Actually, well, both, I guess, but.
So if you take, if you take a look at from this angle. If we come out with the first floor deck, so the first floor deck with the header or it would be, it would, the plate would be here, we'd go out and be right in line here. Okay? Um, and then the second floor deck right now come project three feet over that request. And our proposal is to continue to extend that out so that from the windows all the way over. And down wi- with a post here, we could provide some nice privacy and also looking up, you don't really, you know, you you have privacy for both. Uh, the neighbor and for us.
Right, but what I mean by covered is that there's no roof. You're not planning to put a roof over top of this, are you?
No, no, it's just two decks on top of each other.
Okay. Sorry, to interrupt, continue, please?
Um. In terms of, you know, uh, meeting the criteria of the special permit, uh, you know, ultimately, the way I interpret it. You know, and I'm not gonna get into the legalese and read off every single one of the criteria unless you would like me to. But, you know, effectively, it has to say, I I, you know, are you are you doing, are you within the harmony of the neighborhood and the district? Um, and I would say, yes, we are, you know, we've. We've done everything we can to remain conforming, to appease everyone, um, you know, within within the balance, also doing what meets our needs as as the homeowner. And we're not doing anything that other neighbors don't already have, including the ones that are in closest proximity to us. Um, we've had several neighbors, uh, it. You know, I don't think they were shared, but um several that have um. Have uh provided support and also shown some documentation of of what it looks like in other areas of of the neighborhood and and their houses in particular. Um, you know, as I pointed out, here is uh the R two districts. These are other neighbors um down the street, uh, several, you know, we have we have many other houses around here that have second floor balconies. Most of them, you know, come off of just a primary bedroom. Uh, this one over here comes up a primary bedroom, has a has a neighbor with a window there. You know, same here. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think it really is about, are we be, are we asking for anything unreasonable, um, you know, is the is there, will there be an effect? There's always an effect, which is why we have a special permit, but is it unreasonable and is it beyond, you know, an expected uh ask? And and I say, you know, it really isn't. Uh, we're not, we're not asking for anything that hasn't already been done and isn't consistent with um. You know, with with the harmony of the neighborhood and everything else and as well as law regulation. So with that, I'll 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 zip it and I'm happy to answer uh and respond to any any questions.
Okay, questions from commissioners?
So I'm just one from me, Bill Freeman is, so the main thing we're talking about is the deck's gonna stay the same size, we're just instead of having it be two feet. Off of the grade, it's gonna be up with your plate of your of your current house where your door is.
That's correct.
So dimensionally, it's not different, it's just higher up.
That's correct. So I would not be able to build a conforming deck at this height. Straight across for for a few reasons. One, this side would actually be more than twenty four twenty four inches anyhow. Um, and that would instantly trigger again a nonconforming scenario. The only alternative was to come out with exterior. Uh, exterior stairs, which, you know, it it, we actually have some nice designs come out and then this thirty by twelve would actually pivot ninety degrees. And come straight out into the yard just to, you know, we're trying to. That 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 seemed to be the best scenario to get what we're looking for. Um, and in our view, it it didn't really seem like a logical or ideal scenario for anyone. Um, you know, last thing we wanna do is be here in in the.
The upper deck, you just want it to project out to be even with the lower deck, is that correct?
Yeah, very similar to what's next door here. Obviously, this is sunk in to the structure. Um, but, you know, this would be first floor deck, second floor deck, and but no roof above the second floor deck. And um, and doing so could could provide some more privacy.
Alright, Anne, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, um, uh, one clarification and one question because it wasn't clear to me when you made your application. Um, just so commissioners know. It's depth over twenty four inches in height that. That uh triggered the coverage calculation. So if it's below twenty four inches, um, it doesn't count towards coverage. But um, in your narrative in your application, you, and I may be reading this wrong, you mentioned something about Z B A approved modifications. Have you already received a variance to exceed the three foot projection? Uh, the second floor of this deck? Or are you planning on going to the Z B A for that?
We have no intention of going to Z B A um or anything beyond this this meeting. The only Z B A uh that existed was two years ago when we had the original structure here. And uh, we we had triggered due to uh off the uh side yard offsets or property line offsets. And um, it was, it was pretty hard to pretty much do anything we wanted, um, even even just a modest change without without triggering Z B A. That uh, that litigation, just so you know, has since been resolved.
Right.
Um, as of a couple months ago, so there is no, there is no outstanding variance on the on the title of the deed.
Okay, but to be clear, you are exceeding the three foot projection allowed by the second floor deck in this application. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
Yeah. Can you clarify that a little bit better?
I mean, how?
Um, in the R two zone, you're allowed.
And does it ma- I'm sorry, Anne, does it matter if it's got? If the first floor, if it has columns and it's holding it up, so then it's clearly a deck or no, that doesn't matter?
Um, well, let me, let me walk through this and we should have done this prior, I apologize, but. The maximum building projection allowed in feet is three feet, and then when you go to the definition. Of. Projections. Had it, sorry.
So here's, here's a visual of the neighbor that's literally across the street. It it's, this is the concept. This is precisely the concept.
Yeah, there, I guess my point is is that there may be a, um, I would have to check this with council because. I'm not hundred percent sure on this, but you may in fact need a variance for that second floor projection exceeding the three feet. I'll keep looking for the definition, I'll get back to you.
That doesn't, that doesn't affect us. Considered a covered porch at that point that can be walked out onto?
Again, I'm not gonna do this on the fly, but.
Yeah, they don't have to look at it. But that doesn't affect what we're deciding here, right? Well, yeah.
No, because he's asking for that second floor approval as well and it may be at the wrong body for that, so. Let me do some homework while you're talking.
Okay, well, while we're here, we might as well. We've got some more questions from Larry, Larry?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um. You said you're in a depression where they in the back of the house, right? So how are you gonna handle water accumulating in in that space?
So, uh, as you'll see, this is um, this is a driveway right here, um, the. So uh, as you'll see, this is um, this is a driveway right here, um, the, it's not the. I wish I could get you a little bit of a better angle, but um, the street is uh, you know, just off the tongue of the, of the trailer. And it begins to slope down, as you can see here, there's a porta potty that's right on the road, it does, the natural grading does slope backwards towards the marsh, as does. My neighbor over here and on the other side, that, that natural slope has, has existed, uh, it was even existed on the original house. I can pull, you know, images of that same grading that existed there. Um, what happens is in Mike Bracken, I, I believe might also be on the call, who is the neighbor that is on this side, the west side of it. Can attest to the fact that um, the water has always uh, has always run from ours. Through um, you know, and and drained somewhere right around in this area and and out into the marsh.
But you also showed us earlier that um, uh, the grade slopes down. Towards the back of the house.
Oh, it slopes down from the back of the house to the marsh?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, well, can you? Can you show me that?
Walk out for the little uh, crawl space under the house.
Yeah, where, where, where you see gravel in that particular picture, you described it as a depression.
Yeah, and it flows.
Sorry, uh, I, I should say it's a depression, if you looked at a, at a uh. If you looked at a, you know, a plane, running a plane from um, a straight line from the road to the marsh. On this side of, of the property line, you'd have a pretty even slope straight across. On the other side, there was always a point where there was a dip and then it, it lifted again, the original, you know, the, the. The grading has always existed in that fashion, which is why we looked at it as a natural way of utilizing it.
Larry, the part there, uh, the part that's gravel slopes to the left in this picture.
Yeah, if you look at slide.
I see, okay, so um, uh, the second question is, where are you planning to park your car?
Uh, on this side, original parking had been on this side of the old house, we felt, you know. That we didn't want our side yard on this side because we will have grass all along here. Uh, we will have the uh, two, two car parking right here.
I see, um, uh, just outside parking or are you gonna put a cover over it?
Not allowed, uh. We had to get rid of the garage, um, when we pivoted from the, from the old house to this one, is the only way to do it.
Good, thank you.
All right, um, Jay, if you wouldn't mind un, unsharing for me, please?
Sure.
Uh, before I open up to public comment, uh, public comments, any other questions or comments from commissioners? All right, uh, we'll open up to public comments, uh, please raise your hand either on your camera or on the Zoom platform. Yep, uh, Stephen Dotry. If you wanna unmute and then state your name and uh, address for the record, please. Yep, you're unmuted.
Unmuted.
Uh, your microphone is not picking you up, though. If you. Click on the little arrow, you might have to go to your device settings.
Click the arrow up, you can choose, you know, built in.
Yeah. If you're on a laptop, then you can, there's a mute button in the bottom left-hand corner, there's a little up arrow and then you click that and you can select a microphone. Or you can call in with your phone, is the other way you can do this. All right, while we're waiting on that, I wanna, is there anyone else here who wants to raise their hand? I've seen that. Um, and so we're, while we're waiting on. Uh, those folks, it sounds like there's a recommendation that we need some more time on this, um, to. Have you looked through the projection piece of it? Is there anything else that you need on this project?
Um, well, there may be a contradiction in the, in the, there is a definition of projections in the ordinance that includes balconies. Um, but I would ask after the discussion tonight that. Um, you know, we have a, our, whatever robust discussion we need to have, but that we table any decision. And keep the hearing open so that I can consult with um, our attorneys on this second floor issue.
All right, so, uh. Mr. Dotry, or if we can't get you working, then we can hopefully figure it out for the next meeting, because it looks like we're gonna be tabling to. The next meeting, but it looks like we have uh, Michael Bratton has raised his hand, can you say your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, uh, Michael Bracken and I'm with my wife, Mary Ann, uh, we are the immediate neighbor to the east. Uh, we're number eighteen, Jay's number eight. We've never understood why there's a gap in the numbers, but anyway, we're next door. Um, we've lived here for fifty-two years. And uh, you won't be surprised to know that when we moved here, every house down here was a cottage. And now we are the last surviving cottage, all the others were knocked down and rebuilt. And of course, it were much, much larger. So we, we actually support the um, the application. Uh, the lot sizes here are small, they were first. Uh, designed in about eighteen eighty, uh, Captain, by Captain Brooks. And uh, as in all many areas of Guilford, you, we feel you've got to really um. Be very sensitive to, to the small. Lot sizes while still allowing uh, these houses to grow uh, uh, and, and be appropriate for mo- modern living and for. Families. Uh, nonetheless, it's a very quiet neighborhood and people are very respectful, so. We feel this application is actually a, makes a common sense interpretation of the um. At, at the laws, uh, for managing upgrades and uh, we feel it should be supported. Thank you for your attention.
All right, uh, looks like we got uh, Claire Linway, Linwebber, I butchered that, say your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, of course, uh, that happens often, so don't worry. Claire Line Weber, uh, I live at twenty-eight Vineyard Avenue, I'm, I'm speaking also on behalf of my husband, Angeni Jane, who is traveling at the moment. So our house is not a. They just uh, to reflect on the, the neighborhood, um, we are just to the east of the Brackens, so the Brackens who just spoke. And we've lived in the neighborhood for five years and I just wanted to say, uh, pretty much echo what was. Neighborhood, it's quite densely um, packed with housing, actually, if you saw the aerial photograph shared earlier. Um, in some ways more like, it's not urban in any, by any stretch, but it's like some urban neighborhoods that um. You know, that have general, uh, that have larger, you know, green lot sizes, but um, but are pretty close together, the homes are pretty close together. We moved here because we wanted to know our neighbors, what. Kind of feel isolated, um, so just a few examples of that, uh, I would say, um, there. Text message chain and anytime anyone's hosting a gathering or going to have an outdoor activity that could be. Perceived to be a nuisance or be noisy for a little while, um, that, that information goes out to the neighborhood, um, if there's gonna be. Uh, increase in traffic or kids running around, that kind of thing, um, which signals, I think, that uh. Concerns about um, noise and kind of proper respect for neighbors and their wishes is pretty strong. Uh, so we also support this application, we think it is also quite reasonable, uh, given the constr. Lot size and uh, so very, very supportive of, of this plan.
All right, thank you. Have the Dotries been able to figure out phone call in?
Sorry, we did, yes. That little bit of panic there, um, so, um, thank you for the time today, I know this is quite a long meeting.
Yep, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, I'm Steve Doherty, this is my wife, Elizabeth Price, we are the adjacent um, owners at Tor Vineyard Avenue. We are the house closest to um, the Mills' house. So um, unfortunately, unlike our neighbors who are six, their houses are sixty feet away or eighty feet away or. A hundred and forty feet away like Claire, um, our house. Now only sixteen feet away from their house, so the, you know, we wish we could be in that similar position to support the Mills', but unfortunately. We have different considerations, um, being so close, um, we did submit a letter, um, and um, basically to. Try to paraphrase here, um, our concerns in the letter, um, really they're sort of threefold. One is, you know, just generally a question about what additional coverage is allowed. Uh, under the um, regulations because they were recently changed. Um, two is just the noise that will impact our enjoyment of our house, given the close proximity. And then three, you know, what usage was actually contemplated in the code when it was drafted, because it seems like. What they're proposing um, may be above and beyond what could have been contemplated in the code. So just sort of start from the top here, um, you know, the code refers to, as, as Anne mentioned. An additional ten percent of building coverage. Building coverage is defined in the code as fifteen percent of lot coverage. So ten percent of fifteen percent of lot coverage is, is, is not. Uh, eight hundred square feet, it's only a hundred and twenty-one square feet, so as, you know, the code was recently changed and that. Clause, which was similar in the last code, referred to an additional ten percent of lot coverage. The current code refers to only additional ten percent of building coverage, which means that only a, a small amount in this case. A hundred and twenty-one square feet would be allowed under the special permit. So, so there's, there's a difference in language in what was in the old code versus what was adopted in October. And we believe that encourages a different interpretation. The other thing is, um, so that's, that's one of the things, um, the other thing that we're concerned about is, is generally noise levels, so. You know, we, I did the best research I could, um, given the proximity to find research that would be sort of, you know. Consistent with our concerns, um, there's a quote from, I included in my letter from the Federal Highway Administration. That basically says, you know, noise generated by a conversation between two people three feet apart. Would generally be sixty, sixty-five decibel range, most people prefer the noise levels in their homes to be forty and forty-five decibels. Um, similar to found in a small office, that's a quote from the Federal Highway Administration. Um, other studies mention thirty to forty-five decibels as a standard, an arguable standard for enjoying a quiet office or a bedroom. Um, what's worrisome is, you know, not only for us, given the proximity, um. You know, the noise levels from larger groups or music playing or dogs barking, which can be seventy or seventy-five decibels, which would. Hit our property and our, our bedroom in particular, at a much higher frequency, is that even normal conversations, given the proximity. Of both of the decks, um, would be reaching us at, at a level that's above what is a, a quiet standard. Um, I do show in here and, and whether, maybe I could show it or uh, someone else could show it if we share the screen, but given my track record here. Um, with technology, uh, yeah, here we go, um, we, we, we do include. Um, uh, a. A, this is from the University of Nebraska, sort of a, a suburban noise control study that they did. As really an example here to illustrate what our concerns are. And again, based on this, you know, federal, um, um, hi, hi, it was federal highway, um. Comment about sixty, sixty-five degrees, I'm trying to map it to, this is a different noise level, so. Um, it's a slightly different study, but nevertheless, this is sixty-five decibels here. Um, if we, and this is meters down here, so they show, this is the control.
Um, yeah, we're not seeing your screens, sir, so just.
Okay, all right, all right.
Uh, but yeah, to just paraphrase, so um, I guess Anne, real quick, if you want to address the first comment about the building coverage and then. Uh, the second about uh, noise decibels, please?
Yeah, um, so uh, this question came up. Uh, first when I received the applications, um, because I was like, you know, there are two ways of interpreting this. Um, so I called our good friend Glenn, who helped create these regulations and I said, Glenn. Which way would you interpret this? Because it could be an additional ten percent of fifteen percent or an overall. Additional ten percent and his point to me, and granted, I wasn't here when the ordinance was written, but. Um, his recollection and um, he pointed out the fact that this clause under table notes. Uh, includes things like swimming pools and tennis courts, which clearly. Um, are larger things, um, these, these clauses are only allowed in the R one and R two zone, which are the. Very small lots, but his point to me that. Was that it's an additional ten percent on top of the allowed fifteen percent. So that the maximum building coverage could be brought up to twenty-five percent. Um, I realize that there is ambiguity in that language, but that was his recollection. And he also pointed out to um, the wording, including larger structures here as a support for that.
Right, okay. And then, there's nothing in our codes about decibels necessarily, but it is, decibels is pretty much just related to the town ordinance for noise, right?
Yeah, the noise, the noise ordinance is, um. Uh. The police are the ones who enforce the noise ordinance, but anybody can Google that, it's in the town ordinance and si- it's sixty-five, I believe, at the property line. But it depends on whether it's residential or, or commercial use.
Right, so as far as noise, then it's just comes down to the special permit requirements of whether or not it fits in the neighborhood and, and all those items, right?
Um.
For noise?
Yeah, the use and enjoyment clause about.
Right.
Um, use and enjoyment of said adjacent properties will not be unreasonably affected. So you have to determine what unreasonably means.
Got it, thank you, perfect, all right, uh, I jumped in, I think you had one more point, sir, sorority?
Well, just, just, just two more points, I mean, that, that was the point that, you know, noise does impact the reasonable use and enjoyment. Um, here we're just showing, you know, proximity and, you know, that it is reasonable that we would be impacted even by normal noises. Um, the other thing is that if you're trying, you know, the, the comment that was made before about the previous deck was in the application. Just noting that the previous tech was more than thirty feet away, um, and was buffered by a property by, by a garage. Um, and the last thing is that, you know, when you look at studies about sort of landscaping, other things that, you know, it, it would need to be much denser. Than the eight foot setback and, and even so, what they would do is basically block our entire view or just be looking into bushes. Um, if that were potentially pro-sufficient, which is, which is not. And then the, the, the last thing I'll, I'll bring up is I did include in the endem here is, and I think this is important, as Jay talked about the history of this. Is to understand what was proposed and built and, you know. What, what does that mean for this application? So if you just bear with me for a few more minutes. There was basically several permits that happened, um, one was for a foundation permit which was approved. One was for a building permit and now there's a special permit that's being requested today. In the foundation permit, um, they showed basically a garage under this deck here. Um, and that garage, you know, indicated uh, windows and even interior access, all things that are very typical. To a garage. Um, when the building permit was submitted, neither the deck nor the garage structure under the deck was included. And when questioned about the solution for basically the eight foot drop from the first floor. They proposed a door barricade which. they proposed a door barricade, which I'm showing here as a solution, and that was approved, so they didn't fall out, uh, eight feet. But nev- but nevertheless, a foundation was constructed and the surrounding area, to the best of our knowledge, appears to be graded to accommodate a garage, you can see in here, uh, under the first floor deck. So if, it, it would appear to us that this special permit by elevating the first floor deck is creating the space under it to effectively create a garage. And when I look at the definition of the garage, it's defined as enclosed or partial costructure for the storage of one or more vehicles. Now, when I look at the ve- the, the vehicles I observed the Mills driving, and I look at the mentions on the space ten feet wide, as, as Jay mentioned, by thirty feet long, as you mentioned, by approximately seventy, seven plus feet high, that would more than accommodate the cars that they drive in the space under it. So, you know, I don't believe that when the special permit was contemplating a swimming pool deck and a quarter similar structures, that a garage was included. And I, and it would appear that the deck is really coincidental to the garage that they're looking to build, uh, under the deck, given the space that's available, given the access that, you know, that, that they'll have from the basement to that, to that area. And given that it can more accommodate not every car, but certainly the cars that they're driving on a regular basis.
Okay.
And, and, and I just, it's like, just say one, one more thing about the photos in the neighborhood. The photos in the neighborhood show decks, exterior decks, that are much further away than the decks that being proposed by the Mills. They are, you know, estimating thirty, forty, maybe even fifty feet away from, from neighbors. And they're much smaller, meaning the usage of those decks is going to be far more restricted than what the Mills are proposing next to our house. So for being consistent with the neighborhood, a much smaller deck would be approved because that is consistent with the neighborhood. In addition, in looking at our deck, our property is fifty percent larger than the Mills' property. We didn't have a deck that needed a special permit, and we also put our deck twenty feet away from the property line and insulated by this, the, the buildings, so that we were careful not to impact the enjoyment of our neighbors. You know, that, that is not a consideration that the Mills are offering us in their proposal.
And, and I would just like to add, if I could also add, that I think part of the, um, part of the challenge has been that what initially gets proposed is different from what gets presented for approval. And then what gets approved, for, what gets approved is very different than what gets starting to get built. And I think that just case in point in this call right now, what was initially proposed was a three-foot overhang or a cool cup of coffee. Now that three foot has moved to ten feet. And I think that as neighbors, as we, we try to be very respectful neighbors, we've been in the community for over fifteen, um, fifteen, uh, years at this point. We would just like the same accommodation of respect. Um, what was initially proposed included a garage, included, included some buffering zone of foliage. None of that is being proposed. Um, now this has been discussed with us. It's just further, further scope creep. To be perfectly frank, of what they intend to build, um, with, with very little, if no, um, with no respect to us as neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Um, just, Ann, one point. Oh, okay, thanks. Thanks for the photo. Uh, if you could unshare for me, please? Alright, perfect. Uh, Ann, just one note based off of the comment there. If it was, if the deck was a carport, that's the same, it's the same square footage, it's the same percentage of added to the building coverage, right? There wouldn't be any difference to the deck?
Increase of coverage.
Right, so the, the use of what's happening under the deck doesn't really change the fact that he's trying to add five point five, six percent to the, it only nas- potentially changes the, our decision in terms of a special permit, I guess, but.
Yeah, I mean, the, the language of that, um, clause contemplates, and I'll read it again, so you, there's interpretation here. Uh, ten percent of building coverage for swimming pools, decks, tennis courts, and similar structures.
Oh, okay. Alright, so yeah, that is interpretation, okay. Mr. Mills, yes?
I, you know, I, I'll save us a whole lot of time, you know, um, first off, you, you can't swing a car into there. And if anyone can do it, they can, they can keep my car. Um, it's just not possible to do. It, you know, you can look at any turning radius. It, it is not going to happen. But secondly, it, I'm, I'm, I'm more than willing to take, um, and have a contingency on, on the permit that no, no vehicle would be parked underneath the deck.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we got one other public comment, or Bill, do you want to go first?
I just had a question for Ann. Is currently the deck, the way the drawing was with the yellow line and the red line, is there currently the ability for them to, this deck at a lower elevation?
Yeah, a- as I said before, I mean, I don't know technically where their doors are, but, um, building, uh, decks only come into the building coverage calculation once they exceed twenty-four inches, and that's just a blip in the ordinance that you guys decided on. Um, if it's, uh, twenty-four inches or below, then, um, it doesn't even count towards coverage.
Right, so I'm looking at his drawing, the pictures he showed, and it shows a bulkhead that's roughly ten feet out that he put for to hold his materials of his yard back, and he's building his deck there. He can stay within the twenty-four inches and build the deck as it is, and put steps down to it, or he can raise it up. Is that, and basically what we're discussing is whether he can raise it up?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, he's asking, he's exceeding the twenty-four inches, and so it counts towards coverage.
And it's not going to change the, the effect on the neighbor, uh, being thirty-five inches up or twenty-four inches up, isn't going to change the effect on the neighbor.
I mean, that's what we decide, that's what we're deciding, right? Basically?
Well, just, uh, just to clarify, Bill, the, um, it, it, the deck that would be built at twenty-four inches above grade could not go the full length of the house. It would only be allowed, and this is based on, um, it just would, you would not be allowed to have a, uh, the grading on the depression where there's the exit does not allow for it. So in our minds, it was, uh, that, that, that little deck would just be on the, uh, the west side, um, the Dogarty side of the property, and, you know, to compensate for that loss of space, we would just go further out into the yard, which, you know, in our minds, sort of looked like it was a much worse impact.
Yeah, well, okay, but that's not part of the application. So, yeah, I get that, but that's not part of the application, so. Um, alright, we got two more public comment here. Um, Keith Ainsworth, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, my name is Keith Ainsworth. Um, my address is, or my business address is fifty-one Elm Street, Suite two oh one, uh, in New Haven. I'm an attorney and I represent, uh, Jay Mills. And I just wanted to make a few comments on some of the things that were, were mentioned. Um, one is, uh, with regard to the sound, and I'm going to take this in no in particular order, um, with regard to the sound studies, um, eh, you know, those are very particular scientific studies. I don't think, um, Mr. Doherty has established himself as an expert i- in interpreting such studies and applying them to this particular situation. In any event, um, all of the state noise ordinances exempt the human voice from, uh, from noise ordinances enforcement, um, because the, you, you don't enforce against people who are speaking. Um, plus, I think the interpretation that a conversation at three feet is sixty-five decibels, um, that doesn't pertain to a conversation at a much greater distance. I mean, if you're sitting across the table from someone, yes, it might give them flatter. Um, next, um, you know, the, the deck on the second floor, um, isn't a projection, it's a deck. Um, and I think you could issue your ruling this evening. Um, and certainly if you want to put a contingency on it, that, that your attorney tells you that you need to, um, that there needs to be a, a ZBA approval, that you could approve the, the application with the stipulation that, um, there needs to, if it's determined that there needs to be a ZBA ruling, that that could happen. Um, and you could just make that a, a, a condition of approval. Uh, otherwise, you know, you send this, this project, which is underway, as you could see, the, the project is happening. Um, you know, you're going to delay it yet another month. Um, so I would suggest that that might be a more expeditious, uh, way of approaching this. Um, and finally, in terms of unreasonably affecting a neighbor, it has to be unreasonable. It can't be, um, you know, just any impact on a neighbor. And I think what they're building here is very respectable. They had a much more aggressive, uh, project. That was appealed by the neighbor. The neighbor doesn't seem to be satisfied with the modifications that have been made. Um, and there's been a number of accommodations made, uh, in response, which is remove the garage. Um, and, you know, scale the house back to something that's much more reasonable. If you look around the neighborhood, there's a lot, there's a number of houses that are far more aggressive than this one. I think this is a fairly reasonable request that, uh, the Mills are asking for. Um, and finally, with regard to the garage, um, it's, just as a practical matter, you can't park under that space. They're willing to stipulate that they won't park a car under the deck. Um, and, and frankly, everything else is within the interpretation of this, uh, of this special permit rule, which, you know, it's not an additional ten percent of fifteen percent. Um, that's, doesn't seem to be a reasonable interpretation of your regulation. It's an additional ten percent that you can approve. Um, you've limited people to fifteen percent, um, eh, as a right, but you're allowing for someone to have another ten percent if you deem it appropriate. And that's on a sliding scale. You could say, I'm only going to approve two percent, three percent, five percent. Here, they're only asking for just over half of what they can ask for under the special permit exception. Um, so we'd really ask you to, to, if you can, take action this evening um, and make, uh, the one issue that you've identified, a, a condition. Um, and, and let the, uh, the project at least move forward, uh, with the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, looks like we have one more public comment from Ogoneski. Try and state your name and address for the record. Take yourself off mute.
Sure. Chris Ogoneski, fifteen Vineyard Avenue, Guilford. Um, I've lived there about sixteen years or so. I have four boys, uh, and, uh, you know, I support the project. I think, you know, for someone with a couple of kids, like, he's nuts, Jason's nuts for building a house. Like, there's still not that much room in there. But he did a really nice job of making it look like the old house and what was there. I mean, you know, every house on the, on the block, other than the Brackens, I'm across the street from the Brackens and partly across from the Mills. Uh, quite frankly, is much bigger than what was originally there. And, you know, with kids in a, in a place like that, like, all, I think all of the neighbors have been in the old house. You know, when, when, uh, you know, between Joey Abickel owning it and, and the Mills owning it, and I think, you know, it would be tough to, to have kids in, in that house. You know, with the way it was set up and, and how tight it was, you know, and, uh, you know, I like, uh, like the Dogarty's were, you know, lived in New York City prior to coming to Guilford. And, uh, you know, it would be like living in a bar.
Okay.
You know, so, I support it. I think they did it tasteful.
Thank you. Uh, looks like we have a hand up from Tony Baldock.
Yeah, so.
Name and address for the record.
Yep, Tony Baldock, uh, I work for Stevens and Associates. It's the engineers, uh, Madison, Connecticut. And so I was just reading through the, um, the regulations here, and I just want to bring up that, so, uh, if, whether it's a deck or a projection. So a projection, if it is a balcony, you consider that a projection under the definitions, it does not count the setback. It does not, it does not count the coverage or floor area. And if it is a deck over a deck, um, you try and be double count that. So if the deck on the second floor is exactly the same as the one on the first floor, you would be double counting that coverage either. Uh, it doesn't work that way when you count the first and second floor for coverage. Coverage is a bird's eye view. So I think that's pretty much, uh, you know, solves that. So if you consider it a projection, it doesn't count, and if you consider it a deck, it's the same as the, the second or the first floor.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that. We'll get a determination.
Uh, um, the application, Mr. Mills calls the second floor a balcony, which, under the definition of projection, is included there, so.
Sure. Again, we don't need to labor this because you're going to go get, um, and, or, we're going to get a determination.
We're going to get a determination.
Okay, yeah, I, I just throwing in that if it is a projection on the second floor, it doesn't count. That sounds like what he's applied for.
Alright, thank you. Uh, alright, looks like that's, we've exhausted everyone for public comments, um, Commission has had an entertaining motion to table us to our next meeting based off the recommendation from Ann. Yep, Jay, you have the last comment?
I just want to say thank you guys, uh, for your time and, uh, really appreciate it.
Alright, thanks. Uh, so I heard a motion from Sean to table, do have a second?
Second.
What's that, Bill? Uh, alright, we have a motion in a second. Uh, Larry Zola?
Yes.
Uh, Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
And I'll also, yes, thank you, Ann.
Okay, um, on to the regular meeting. Um, our next item on the agenda, though you may want to consider these simultaneous because it's the same property. Um, sixty-six High Street map, thirty-two Lot Sixty Zone R3. The applicant is Michael Harkin for Harkin Engineering. The owner is sixty-six High Street Guilford LLC. This is a modification of a special permit without a public hearing per section nine point four point G point six. And then, um, parallel to that, um, is a currently tabled site plan application, which you will need to vote to take off the table for the same address for a modification of the site plan and coastal site plan to allow for the construction of a thirty by sixty dog park. So my suggestion would be you vote to on table and allow the applicant to speak on both applications and then vote separately on them.
Do I hear a motion to do so?
We untable it for tonight, and we combine both applications into one.
Second.
Alright. Uh, Larry Zola?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Alright. Uh, thanks for sticking with us, Mike and Marjorie. Let's, uh, talk about it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record. My name is Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering, located at seventy-eight Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killianworth, Connecticut. Um, again, here tonight on behalf of our client, sixty-six High Street Guilford LLC, also known as the Horton Group for the dog park project at sixty-six High Street. Um, again, we're here tonight for the modification of a special permit without a public hearing. And we're here for the coastal site plan application to allow for the thirty by sixty-foot, uh, proposed dog park on the site. So at our last meeting, we, we basically went into the plans in detail of what we were proposing to do there. Um, after that, um, the commission agreed to have the modification of a, a special permit without a public hearing. Um, there was some discussion on, on how it had to be published correctly, and again, here we are tonight. So, um, just so you know, we, after the meeting, I set up a meeting with Kevin McGee because he, there was some questions about erosion controls out there. Um, you know, within three days, I met with Kevin McGee out at the site, um, went over what he was looking for, for additional erosion controls. We actually already put them in and implemented them. I think he even inspected them already. Um, there was one area of a little bit of, uh, erosion that he had us to, um, to add some riprap to, um, as part of our plan, which we did. We have a revised plan of five fourteen, twenty, uh, twenty-four, which shows that modification that Kevin wanted. Um, so, uh, you know, just trying to be really brief. We've been on for a long time. I know you guys got a lot more to come. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if you want to see the little area that Kevin wanted to add the, uh, riprap. Um, but it's a small area and.
The next question for me is, for one, anything changed from the last meeting in terms of what you're proposing?
No, it did not.
Alright, and then the second is, do you have like a general overall site plan or something, just to demonstrate um, how this relates to the neighborhood, the surrounding area?
Uh, we did not, um, I mean, we have the general site plan that we have.
General site plan, please, yeah.
I, I think we went over that aerial. Everybody looked at the, uh, aerial views via Google last time we were on the meeting.
But at the time, it wasn't a special permit. This is a special permit application technically, so just pull it up. But at the time, it wasn't a special permit. This is a special permit application technically, so just pull it up, please.
Uh, Anne, you want to put it, put it up probably quicker? Okay, so this is the revised plan. The only thing that was really added was the color photo. Um, shows the small erosion area that's existing out there. Either color photo up on top.
And it's surrounded by marsh, right?
Yes. Yep. So off to the right side of that photo, you can see the existing riprap. To the left, we didn't um continue that riprap around because it wasn't part of the original plan. Uh, Kevin asked us to put that riprap there. Uh, so we did put a call call out on the plan uh showing that area to be ripwrapped. Um, and that's that highlighted section. Um, off to the left side of the dog park, there's a little honeycomb area that Kevin wanted. So that's the only addition to the plan from from what you guys heard last uh last month.
All right, thank you. Any uh questions from Commissioners?
No, just a compliment to to Michael for his plans.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, if you don't know, uh, Anne, anything else to bring up on this one?
Uh, no, I just added the conditions um from Kevin that he asked to need to put in. Um, so the additional conditions, I'll I'll just read. Um, one is revised plan should be submitted showing existing site conditions. Additional search stones should be placed on the north slopes adjacent to the onsite pond. I think that's what you're showing there. And then nine, uh, soil erosion sedimentation control must be installed upon approval between the tidal wetlands and the filled area. The town's EEO, which is me, I guess, should be notified to inspect measures as soon as they are installed. All measures shall be maintained until the final acceptance and sign off for certificate of occupancy and certificate of zoning plans.
All right. Mike, any problem with those stipulations?
No, we have no problems with those. And Anne, the erosion controls are in, so if you wanted to do an inspection.
Yep, in my free time, yes.
Kevin already looked at them, I believe.
All right, uh, would the Commissioner like to make a approval based off the approval notice? Uh, Anne, right off.
Um, Mr. Chair, I would suggest you uh vote on the special permit first and then vote on the site plan and coastal site plan separately.
All right, approval on the special permit. Would like to make a motion.
Make a motion that we approve as stated.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
Second, Ted, uh, discussion. Seeing none, uh, we have a a motion in a second for approval. Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And I also, yes, and then we'll do CAM applications. I want to make a motion on a CAM application for this project.
I'll make a motion that we approve the CAM application as stated.
Yep. Second, all right, second from Ted. Uh, discussion on scene. Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman? Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
And also, yes. Um, do we have to officially approve the site plan too?
That was part of the coastal site plan.
All right, sweet.
You voted on that.
Thank you very much.
All right, guys, thank you so much. Have a great night. We'll see you soon.
Thank you too. All right.
Okay, the last regular meeting item is one eighty-seven Three Mile Course, the Collinburg property. Map seventy lot eighteen A zone R three. The applicant is Todd Anderson of Anderson Associates. On behalf of the owner, Mark Collinburg, this is the new approval of the previously approved subdivision that we discussed last month.
Good evening, everyone. Todd Anderson from Anderson Engineering Survey and Associates, ten fifty-four Boston Post Road in Guilford. Um, as Anne said, we discussed this this last month. Um, this was a subdivision that was approved, I believe, in June of last year. And due to a co- miscalculation of days of the calendar on my part and a error by town staff of uh notifying you guys of requested extensions. Um, this did not get filed in time. So, um, here before you tonight to ask your reapproval of the approved subdivision so we can move forward. Um, there were some conditions put on the subdivision approval. We have uh satisfied them all. Um, a plan for engineering for the driveway and so forth. Um, the property markers and road line markers have been put in as reflected on the uh Mylar to be filed. Um, so, short and sweet because it's getting late, I'm open for any questions.
Um, so, so, uh, I, my question is, is this well, to you, Todd, and to Anne, is this a technicality?
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah.
Everything was properly noticed this time, Anne? We're good there?
So, Anne, is everything in order?
Um, the only thing I saw, um, and I would just confirm this with the town engineer, but she asked me to include include the condition that the new driveway been be constructed in accordance with town standards.
Okay. Go ahead.
We eliminated all the other conditions from the approval from last year and just kept that one. And if it's been um corrected, then we can just ignore it.
Yeah, and we are, to add, we do have a site plan for uh, specific two lot two, which is the new lot construction that we brought before wetlands after the uh subdivision approval. That includes the widening of the driveway. Uh, everything that the town engineer has asked for is on that plan and will be implemented.
All right, uh, so next time, Todd, do it right the first time and don't keep this up so late.
It was partially our fault too, so we both messed up. Let's be clear.
Yeah, I need to rush up on my math and uh get my calendar straight.
Just like some alerts. Uh, okay.
Things at once here.
We make a motion then to approve this at this point?
You can do that. Thank you. Have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a second, please.
Second, yes.
Take it from Sean. All right, uh, oh, uh, all to approve, Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Also, yes, good luck to you, Todd.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so in other biz- other business, we had two administrative site plan approvals. Um, and then we need to approve the minutes from April third and from May first.
Perfect. Let's go with the site plans.
Uh, no, we don't need to say anything about them.
Oh, we don't, okay.
The minutes.
Okay, we're on the minutes then.
I know Ted had um a uh correction to the April third minutes.
Yeah, uh, okay, so Ted's got a correction that he sent you, Anne?
Um, yes.
No, I'll I'll explain.
Go ahead.
Sure.
The, in the April minutes as uh the draft that we were given, um, it indicates that the uh per, the member who was absent was Sean. Uh, and uh, then in the call to order, it says that uh Sean was the guy who called it to order and ran the meeting. So there seems to be some inconsistency here. Um, it would seem to me that maybe uh uh Scott ran the meeting, but uh, you know.
Is that the meeting that I missed? Is that the meeting I missed, Anne?
Oh, it's all running together, but what I'll do is I promise to check the recording and I'll fix that.
It's possible that I missed that meeting and Sean actually ran it.
I I'm just saying that the uh the minutes as proposed are internally inconsistent.
I agree.
Well, I actually did remember meeting.
You did. You don't remember when that was?
So, let me check.
You did a good job.
I will check the recording on that one and I will fix it appropriately if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, perfect. Uh, all right. Is anyone else, so obviously Ted was able to uh review the meeting minutes substantially complete, Ted?
Yep.
All right, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the April third minutes?
So moved. I'll make that motion to approve.
Thank you, Bill. Second from?
Corrected, as will be.
As corrected, correct. Uh, second from Ted?
Yep.
Yep. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Yes, all right, uh, is anyone able to review the May first meeting minutes?
Yeah, I I reviewed them and I'd be, uh, I I'd propose that they're accepted.
All right, so we have a uh motion of approval from Ted. Give a second. Second from Sean?
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, uh, Anne? Anything else that we need to go over? We have a new person on the staff who did not stay for the whole meeting. What's going on?
I told her she could leave because it's a lot. She's only three days in. And uh, I didn't think she needed to sit here for the entire time, but uh Robin Penna has joined staff as my administrative assistant. So if you have time to stop by and say hi, I'm sure she'd appreciate it. Um, she's three days in and she's doing great, so.
So, uh, Anne, we are, we are thrilled, you know, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but we are thrilled that you've got some help now and, you know, I mean, you've been doing
Too much.
Too much for a long time and you know, if if you can, you know, find the time to train her, you're going to be able to do ac- actually a town planner's job.
Yeah.
Someday.
I need a video for.
This raises, this raises the question of when are we going to when is the town going to uh get off their high horse and do whatever is required to hire us, to hire a zoning enforcement officer?
Yeah. Yeah, Matt Howie, what's you, what you doing?
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
Well, I mean, I I called Mitch Goldblatt, who I know from other town business and had a chat with him. And it was very discouraging. He said, well, it's just out of our price range and we he didn't seem to think that this was something that was going to happen in the next couple of years.
Well, Ted, what did we just go through? We had a referendum that was voted down. I mean, the, you know, does the town have an appetite to add more cost to the town budget?
But this is something that's in the town budget. We're filling a an a, an existing slot, Sean.
Yep.
I know, I know, but.
Well, let them know. Been talking to them already.
Um, if I can interject, you know, and Scott knows this, this will, we have an application period that's ending on Friday. This will be our fourth round attempting to hire somebody. Um, it's really hard to find anybody who's remotely qualified. At this point, I'm willing to train anybody who's personable, who can handle the conflict inherent to that job. And I'll, you know, I'm, that's where I am. I I was at the point where I was like, only somebody qualified, but now I'm lowering my standards. So.
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, I, you know, I I feel your pain and I, you know, I I drive around, I do meals on wheels. And I drive all over Guilford and I see violations everywhere.
Muck.
And, you know, that I would not envy any person or not invite any person to be the enforcement officer. It just, it's a, it's a thank goodness job.
Yeah.
So, and and we let things get so out of hand that there's a big backlog.
Well, that's, that's right, Ted. You're absolutely right. Unless it's brought on control, it just goes out of control.
Is there any room to have a a temporary, you know, by the hour type person to just go do and?
Right now, nobody's available. Uh, like the folks that we use prior to Anne, they're not available. They're full.
Well, you know, I I I would do it, I would, I would do it on an LA basis, um, if I was allowed to wear a mask.
Or if I stand next to you, does that work too?
Yeah, right.
No, what I'm saying is, is there a certain criteria that has to be met to, can you get a?
No, I have, I do have a consultant on board who's reviewing permits, but she's not doing any actual zoning enforcement, so that's you know, half the job is permits, half the job is zoning enforcement.
What are the criteria that you're looking for for just someone to go do out in the field, look at things? Yes, your your erosion control is not correct. Oh, it is correct. What are you looking for?
Well, I haven't, I haven't split the job in two yet, but if this next round doesn't yield to anybody, I'm I'm willing to look at that and then it's really just a reasonable personality with, you know, diligence.
Certain set of expectations of them.
And independence and the ability to follow direction.
They have that, they have to have that that balance of their personality and that's the hard part. And Anne, Anne?
Well.
I'm just going to say to you, you've done a great job in this interim period, you know, from Jamie, you know, to you, you know, without you know, without an admin, and I just, I I just hope you're gonna stick it out. So I, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, if you didn't have anything else, Anne, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one quick question before we do? I got this request from a a member of the Affordable Housing Committee. Um, is there uh electronic form of the old regulations? The old, old zoning regs that we recently revised?
Yes, I can, if it's not too big, I can send it to you. Otherwise, I can put it on a flash drive.
Okay, great, thank you. And and when was that last amended?
I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
I think it was.
A bunch of times.
It was probably, um, it may have been nineteen ninety-five?
No, 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 there were tons of amendments.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. A full rewrite was long ago.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah. I don't, it was ever fully written, but I don't know. I will send that to you if I can. Otherwise, I'll, I'll let you know.
Great.
All right, who'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will do that, let's adjourn.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Sean and our customary wave goodbye if you're in agreement.
Goodbye.
Can you stick on for one second, Anne?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hold on, I'm going to stop recording.
Yeah.